Okay, again, good morning, tribal council, our guests, and our people online. Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Chair.
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna go ahead and get started here. We'll call this maiden to order at ten thirty-nine. Okay. Councilman Jumping Eagle, can you give us an opening prayer?
Yep. Thank you, Chair. To God, I ask for prayers for all of us today. To God, as we sit here and make decisions for the people. To God, I want to say a special prayer for our elders and our children. Whether it's getting cold, to God, I pray that they're taking care of it. They have warm houses, to God. I pray for our youth, to God, our students who are in the schools. I pray for strength, to God, that they that they reach their educational goals. To God, I pray for all those who are sick, those who are suffering, those lost loved ones. To God, I pray for healing, to God, for strength for all of them, to God. Again, I just pray for our people, for this call that's coming, to God. Keep them safe, to God. Madakas.
Okay. Councilman London, can you give us some words of encouragement?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. Good morning to everybody that's out there listening or watching. Just want to encourage us to to work together and have an open mind with things that are on the agenda. And let's get some stuff done.
Okay, at this time, we have some honorings. So we're gonna jump right into those. And I believe, Councilman Dreamer?
Yes.
We have some honorings here, so I'm gonna turn the mic over to our, I need yours, all yours.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody, my audience. And honors of award for our Indian relay team racers. We have Ariana Holiday, Lexi Brewer, Callie Long Turkey. We're just gonna read some, we're gonna get off to a bio real quick. Before we get started, I want to share a little story about Ariana. I was at the hospital one day, meeting my daughter. And she comes in with her grandma, Joyce, who's pretty sick. You know, she's sitting there over at the over, barely sit there. And my daughter wanted a picture with her. So we asked her, and she said, yeah. And she, the toughness in her, her mental toughness stood up. And took a picture with my daughter right now, too, if I wanted to. So that's how tough of a little girl she is. So I still admire her strength for doing that to her people, her people, you know. She gives that strength to them, no matter how bad she's feeling. A weak shit, but she still gets up to do that for our young people. So I'm gonna say thank you. Share that story with her. We'll get started here. Today, we want to recognize the Brew Crew Women's Relay Team for their accomplishments this summer. Ariana Holiday, the rider, Lexi Brewer, the sender, and Callie Long Turkey, the catcher. These girls had an outstanding relay season. They won Molewars Alticore, the Women's Relay Championship, World Championship Women's Indian Relay in Sheridan, Wyoming, Champion's Women's Relay Championship, Casper, Wyoming. She reached the championship races, most winning races the days before as well. These ladies worked hard all season and offseason to be this successful. The sport is not easy and requires a lot of that, that's it. So it starts with Ariana Holiday. It's the daughter of Marlena and Allen Holiday. She is seventeen years old. She was born and raised on the Pioneer Indian Reservation. She started off with racing when she was thirteen years old, mentioned by her grandpa, Shorty Brewer. She does the Women's Relay and is Brew Crew's second maiden's race competitor. In maiden's race this year, she won a Lordbrew maiden's race championship and Eagle Butte maiden's race championship. She is featured in the backfield film Dancing Warrior and ESPN short film, Shake Your Dog. She encourages all youth to chase their dreams, no matter how hard they seem. Next, we have Lexi Brewer. It's the daughter of Fondue Twist and Red Brewer. She's twenty-one years old and was also born and raised on the Pioneer Reservation. She is currently a student at Fort Bliss College in Colorado. She is also an accomplished racer of the sport of Indian Relay. She competes in maiden races and other maiden races over the years. The most honorable mentions are Canterbury Park maiden race champion, twenty twenty-one, and Houston, Idaho State her maiden champion, twenty twenty-two. This year, she won Bobby Joe Clark Memorial Maiden Race Championship in Molewars Alticore. Pioneer Week Three Days Maiden Race Championship. She was also featured in ESPN's short film, Shake Your Dog. That's Lexi Brewer. Next, we have Callie Long Turkey. It's the daughter of Teresa and Bill Long Turkey. She is from the Lordbrew Indian Reservation. She's fifteen years old. She's not a maiden's racer currently. She competes in these races and does very good. She's a huge part of the team and plays a very important role as well. She did very well in high school, very well in school, plays volleyball, and does cheerleading for Lordbrew High School. Other team members are Stan Brewer, Santa Ala Brewer, Bajah Olson, Billy Bob, Junkin Eagle, Calvin Coates, Parker Brewer, Kai Brewer, and Lizzie Brewer, who play a huge part behind the scenes and do a lot of the work and encouragement. It wasn't just the effort of the Brew Crew Women's Team, but the effort from everyone with their horse racing team. We practice as a whole, work as a whole, race as a whole, win as a whole. These girls learned how to ride a horse exceptionally through engaging in horse culture and play a huge part in the rides every year. Crazy Horse Ride, Supremity Ride, Little Big Horn Ride, Bigfoot Ride, et cetera. These girls became huge mentors to the younger kids on the ride and look up to them in many ways. You couldn't have done all these ways, including this year, without your big horse community. There are a lot of friends and family behind their shoulders and the amount of support and love they give from everyone. The Brewer family makes everything possible for the girls. I want to give a special shout out to Stan and Ala Brewer, who are the owners of the Brew Crew Relay. Stan and Ala do a lot for the team, and it takes a lot to manage everything. They do a lot during the season and during the offseason. The work they go goes quiet and beyond and never unnoticed and doesn't stop. Stan and Ala also do a lot of work with our youth in their after-school program called Sage to Saddle, where they teach kids how to ride, connect, and take care of our horse partners. I want to thank the tribe for doing this honoring for our girls as part of the Indian Relay. Does not get as much recognition as other sports on reservation.
Thank you, guys, for being here today. We're very proud of you. We will not somebody. Some of us follow you guys even on Facebook and almost post these that you guys put out when they're racing live and they're far away from your home territory. So this first certificate of recognition is in honor of Ariana Holiday, Brew Crew Women's Indian Relay Team, twenty twenty-five, champion of champions, world champion. The O'Gallows and Tribe holds in high esteem individuals who exemplify the qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, and generosity. In recognition of the hard work, dedication, and success of above-mentioned individual, the O'Gallows and Tribe hereby honors their accomplishment. Such success demonstrates leadership and is inspirational amongst the youth and the Oyate of the O'Gallows and Coalition. Presented on this twenty-fifth day of November, twenty twenty-five, Frank Starr comes up president of the O'Gallows and Tribe. So certificate of recognition in honor of Callie Long Turkey, Brew Crew Women's Indian Relay Team, twenty twenty-five, champion of champions, world champion. The O'Gallows and Tribe holds in high esteem individuals who exemplify the qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, and generosity. In recognition of the hard work, dedication, and success of above-mentioned individual, the O'Gallows and Tribe hereby honors their accomplishment. Such success demonstrates leadership and inspiration amongst the youth and the Oyate of the O'Gallows and Coalition. Presented on this twenty-fifth day of November, twenty twenty-five, Frank Starr comes up president of the O'Gallows and Tribe. Certificate of recognition in honor of Lexi Brewer, Brew Crew Women's Indian Relay Team, twenty twenty-five, champion of champions, world champion. The O'Gallows and Tribe holds in high esteem individuals who exemplify the qualities of courage, bravery, and fortitude and generosity. In recognition of the hard work, dedication, and success of above-mentioned individual, the O'Gallows and Tribe hereby honors their accomplishment. Such success demonstrates leadership and inspiration amongst the youth and the Oyate of the O'Gallows and Coalition. Presented this twenty-fifth day of November, twenty twenty-five, Frank Starr comes up president of the O'Gallows and Tribe. All right, certificate of recognition in honor of Stan Brewer Jr., Brew Crew Women's Indian Relay Team, twenty twenty-five, champion of champions, world champion. The O'Gallows and Tribe holds in high esteem individuals who exemplify the qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, and generosity. In recognition of the hard work, dedication, and success of above-mentioned individual, the O'Gallows and Tribe hereby honors their accomplishment. Such success demonstrates leadership and is inspiration amongst the youth and the Oyate of the O'Gallows and Coalition. Presented this twenty-fifth day of November, twenty twenty-five, Frank Starr comes up president of the O'Gallows and Tribe. All right, certificate of recognition in honor of Billy Bob Junkin Eagle, Brew Crew Women's Indian Relay Team, twenty twenty-five, champion of champions, world champion. The O'Gallows and Tribe holds in high esteem individuals who exemplify the qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, and generosity. In recognition of the hard work, dedication, and success of above-mentioned individual, the O'Gallows and Tribe hereby honors their accomplishment. Such success demonstrates leadership and is an inspiration amongst the youth and the Oyate of the O'Gallows and Coalition. Presented this twenty-fifth day of November, twenty twenty-five, Frank Starr comes up president of the O'Gallows and Tribe. If that everyone could shake their hands of gravel, power to do a song or shake your hands while you're doing that. Okay, we've got one more. Emerald Janice. Emerald Janice, unfortunately, she can't make it. She's sick right now, so keep her, keep her in prayers. We're in the family right now, but we're still gonna go through the honoring. The family insisted we go ahead and do it. And we don't know if she could make it, so she's up. So we're just gonna go ahead and recognize her. Emerald's career at the Indian House Service was nothing short of extraordinary. Spanning and incredible fifty-seven years, just a few days shy of fifty-eight years of dedicated service. Her fond commitment to dental health began at the Pioneer Hospital. Her expertise touched countless lives across multiple facilities, including the Washington Yakima Hospital, Hospital Indian House Center, and the KIHL House Center. Emerald served as a supervising capacity at KIHL House Center. Emerald not only rendered invaluable care, but also played a crucial role in shaping her dental department. Beyond her remarkable tenure and extensive knowledge, Emerald was cherished for her unwavering kindness and infectious smile. No matter how demanding or busy the day became, her calm demeanor and her bright spirit were a constant source of comfort and reassurance. As she departs, the primary service unit would finally acknowledge her valuable expertise, but also her truly kind and compassionate soul. Her legacy of devoted service and warmth will undoubtedly continue to inspire all that have the privilege to be on here. You know, I don't know if Emerald gets to see this. I hope she gets to see it or hear it. But, you know, we thank you for all those years of service to our people. I remember being a little boy, come up here to the old hospital in awkward times we were met with people you didn't face and you didn't recognize. Emerald was one of our own tribal members that dedicated her life to what she loved doing. Oftentimes, it was only friendly, local face that you see in the facility. And that gave you comfort, especially as a little boy or a little girl that come in there to see it and then the cota in there made you feel a little bit better. Certificate of recognition in honor of Emerald Janice, fifty-seven years of dedicated service to IHIS. The O'Gallows and Tribe holds in high esteem tribal members who exemplify the qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, and generosity. The O'Gallows and Tribe hereby recognizes Emerald Janice for her commitment, hard work, and dedication to serving many native people within Indian House Service facilities across the nation for the past fifty-seven years. She is a well-educated and successful recital woman, was a great inspiration and a role model for our youth and the Oyate of the O'Gallows and Coalition. Presented this twenty-fifth day of November, twenty twenty-five, Frank Starr comes up president of the O'Gallows and Tribe. Row call. Current hours. The hour is here.
Who's that, James? James and Anna, so.
Holiday. Did you? You have the start foot bags, they wanna. There he is. Save the day. I'm a little related to him. Push the, push the lumber right into the, stop, you're bending it. How far into the building? Everybody here, it's just news.
This is Troy, and that's it.
At Green Sherwood, down over there. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. Okay, secretary, row call.
Want to say good morning to everybody and happy Thanksgiving. David Weir is excused. Troy Little.
Here.
Richard Greenwell, Sr.
Here.
Blaine Littlethunder.
Here.
Jeremy Rosales.
Here.
B. Frandl is excused. James Cross.
Yep, here.
Alan Halverson is going to be late. Jackie Sears is excused. Conrad Gossberg. Bo Littlewhite Man.
Here.
Garfield Still. Lyle Weston.
Present.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Here.
David Kelly.
Present.
Sonia Littlehot Weston, here. Jillian Swadded Bear is excused. Tyler Lunderman.
Not here, just kidding, here.
George Dreamer, Jr.
Present.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Sr.
Here.
Craig Dillon.
Here.
Fourteen present, two absent, two excused, one running late. Four excused, one late. Establish score.
Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
We have two thirds from HHS.
Okay.
First is resolution of the O'Gallows and Tribe Council entering the contract with Lakewood Development Corporation for construction of individual and community sanitation facilities for scattered sites on the Pioneer Indian Reservation. Motion.
Yeah, motion, my councilman Jumping Eagle, second. Second, my councilman Standing Soldier. Off the call.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Littlethunder.
Here.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer, Jr.
Yes.
Bo Littlewhite Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell, Sr.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Sr.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehot Weston. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Yes.
Fourteen unanimous motion carried.
Thank you. Last one is resolution of the O'Gallagher tribal council approving the disan Roman of free iron club from the O'Gallagher tribe membership. Motion.
Motion by councilman Jumping Eagle. Second by councilman Standing Soldier. Role call.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Littlethunder.
Here.
Tyler Lunderman.
No.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Bo Littlewhite Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehot Weston. James Cross.
Move.
Craig Dillon. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
They just stand by. We have fourteen courts, so two-thirds will be ten. Eleven yes, two no, one not voting motion carried.
That's all for me, Chief Chair.
Councilman Rosales.
Chair, we have two from economic and business collectively.
Okay.
One is a resolution of the O'Gallagher tribal council of the O'Gallagher tribe to rescind the previous resolution number twenty-four dash eighty-four XP and to appoint a gaming compact negotiation team for draft to propose to the tribal council amendments to the tribe's last few gaming compact with a status quo. Motion.
And by councilman Rosales, second by councilman Littlehot Weston. Role call.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Littlethunder.
Here.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Bo Littlewhite Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehot Weston. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, one not voting motion carried.
Thank you, Chair. Our next one is resolution of the O'Gallagher tribal council of the O'Gallagher tribe granting consent to use the O'Gallagher Blue Water Supplies and Water Pipeline regularly for broadband and fiber. Motion.
Motion by councilman Rosales, second by councilman...
I'm second, but, um, Chair, can I just make a comment to this resolution?
Yeah.
We had some discussion yesterday and, um, a dispute with our attorney. It is an urgent matter, right?
Yes.
So, I know it's a two-thirds item, but, I mean, it's kind of over all our legal agenda, but, um, I know last month we didn't finish our agenda. And so if we get to that point, um, I like to push this up to the top because it is an urgent, urgent matter. But we'll see how it goes today. But I just want to make that comment, I'll second. Second, um, there's a motion.
Okay. If it hits the two-thirds of all councilmen, then we can move it up. We can make a motion, move it up. Okay. Role call.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Littlethunder.
Here.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Bo Littlewhite Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehot Weston. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Fourteen unanimous motion carried.
That's agreed to be.
James, you don't make the motion to move it?
Chair, I think the motion to have this item moved without the agenda.
Okay, motion by councilman Rosales, second by councilman Cross. Role call.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Littlethunder.
Here.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Bo Littlewhite Man.
Here.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehot Weston. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Yes, fourteen motion carried. Presented, councilman. Okay, councilman Jever.
Thank you, Chair. I got two from, um, by now. First one is resolution of O'Gallagher tribal council of O'Gallagher tribe approving the fifth amendment for the Morse Marley Union Order Engineer Amendment for the Level Three Water Systems Oh Three. Motion.
Motion by councilman Jever. Second by councilman Weston. Role call.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Littlethunder.
Here.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Bo Littlewhite Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehot Weston. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Fourteen unanimous motion carried.
Our second one is ordinance of O'Gallagher tribal council of O'Gallagher tribe rescinding ordinance numbers twenty-three dash twenty-four against dating procedures of ordinance number twenty dash nineteen allowing for video conference appearances for tribal council members.
A motion. Motion failed. Video conference.
At the Zoom.
Rescind twenty-three, twenty-four.
Zoom.
Go ahead, councilman.
So, Chair, um, I think the, the, I wasn't there when this was brought forth, but I think the reason, was probably behind not making quorum, is that? Is that the reason behind it? And, um, I'm not a big demotion, but I think this would help, help us do that, you know, if it's, but then it could be abused also, you know, it could be abused. So, I, I mean, I, I, I don't know. But I think, you know, it's good that we're all in person. But then again, the time is going to come, make quorum, it'll help.
Yes. Go ahead, councilwoman.
Yeah, I think it came to finance and the reason why it was, uh, wanted, they wanted to rescind it, writing was, um, joint working sessions. Like, for example, finance working session, we don't get quorum. So, um, some of them wanted to come on Zoom. And so that's the reason why it was rescinded, but I said the same thing too, what you're saying, that, um, I think the reason why we stopped it was because we couldn't get quorum. And plus, you guys mentioned about being here physically after meetings, and I think sometimes being on Zoom constantly. You know, I think that, uh, those are some things that were questioned in the past and that's why that was put in place, so we all have our own here. So, that was the only reason was to rescind it based on just for working sessions when we're meeting on weekends. Because some of them can't make it on weekends.
Councilman Dillon and councilman Jumping Eagle.
I was the one that made the motion, Mr. King, but after thinking about it, I had no problem with working sessions, but when we included the council, that's why I didn't make the motion or anything. I think we should be here in person in council. That's our job to be here. That's what we're elected for. And then when we don't do it, you know, we always have to answer the question why we didn't do it. So, yeah, I had no problem, but maybe we can look at it for working sessions only and bring it back in that hand.
Councilman Jumping Eagle.
Well, with that being said, can we just amend it, whatever, to just stay committee meetings?
Yeah.
But then be mandatory in person in council? If that's the case, that's what it's under, it's a committee use. I'm not gonna make no motion.
I, I, I just, yeah, we should just table it, send it back, so we, we make it specific instead of a broad issue. And so instead of a, uh, no vote, I'd like to make motion to send it back to the committee.
Okay.
Finance committee, table the motion.
Table, okay. I would, I'd also like to comment on that, you know, every month we, we go through the same thing. We wait and wait and wait. We're supposed to be starting at ten, not ten-thirty, but I give you that leniency because sometimes we do, um, run into problems. But we shouldn't be showing up at nine-thirty to start at ten. But we don't. And we drag it on and on and on. So, I'm not ready for, uh, Zoom because that's gonna also get out of hand. You know, we're all elected here, officials, to be here, to represent our districts. So, we need to stick to the plan. And then let's stop, stop waiting these and giving ourselves extra time. And when we do this thing once a month, if you have an emergency, that's fine, but you gotta adjust your schedule for this, uh, these meetings so we can start out time. Hell, these, these council meetings are dragging two, three days now because we're waiting on people, um, for quorum, so I just want to mention that. So, we have a motion on the floor by councilman Dillon, second by councilwoman Littlehot Weston, to table. And send back to committee. Secretary, offer the vote.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Littlethunder.
Here.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Bo Littlewhite Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehot Weston. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Fourteen unanimous motion carried. Councilman Standing Soldier.
This is a concern of land committee. And I don't know if we have to two-thirds it on, but it was done in a proper timeframe, so I don't know why it wasn't put on the agenda. And that's concerning to vacant tribal trust land leases to Anthony Worthinghors. The meeting was held on November third. So, it, I don't know if we want to two-thirds it on or run it in a regular, a little slot.
It's gotta be two-thirds now. So, is that your motion?
Um, yeah, why don't you let me read the resolution real quick? It's gonna be two-thirds of the time. Yeah, resolution of the O'Gallagher tribal council of the O'Gallagher tribe to approve four short-term leases for vacant tribal trust lands on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation for Anthony Worthinghors for the development of affordable residential housing units. Motion.
Okay, motion by councilman Standing Soldier, second by councilwoman Littlehot Weston. Role call.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Littlethunder.
Here.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Bo Littlewhite Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Um, I have a comment. Um, motion maker, um, can we get a copy of your resolution there? Is it here? Oh, okay, I got one. Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehot Weston. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Go ahead, councilman.
Okay, my last concern is, um, and I don't know how we're gonna do this, but CKP is here. And they've been, I don't know if we want to run it through land and have our treasurer come down and address.
That is two more, two-thirds CKP.
Okay, two-thirds CKP.
Okay, let me, let me run that, uh, motion there was fourteen. Fourteen unanimous motion carried. Okay, so we have, you want us to motion that? Uh, so we have a motion by councilman Standing Soldier, second by councilman Lunderman. To two-thirds CKP.
Yep.
Role call.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Littlethunder.
Here.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Bo Littlewhite Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehot Weston. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Fourteen unanimous motion carried. Counselor Weston.
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, law and order has two items for two-thirds agenda. Uh, first one, ordinance of the Ol' Walsu Tribal Council of the Ol' Walsu Tribe amending the ordinance number zero-seven dash one-three, the Ol' Walsu Tribe Child and Family Code by adding sections one-four, one, four-one-four point six and four-one-four point seven for kinship foster care license. Motion.
Motion by Counselor Weston, seconded by Counselor Taylor. Roll call.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Laya Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Uh, James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Thirteen, yes, one not voted motion carried.
Our second item, the resolution of the Ol' Walsu Tribal Council authorizing the Ol' Walsu Tribe Department of Public Safety to purchase two OST Highway Safety Police Vehicles through John Jones in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars utilizing fiscal year 2026 OST PS Highway Safety Correct Funds. Motion.
Motion by Counselor Weston, seconded by Counselor Green, Counselor Little Hawk Weston. Roll call.
David Kelly? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Laya Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Uh, James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Fourteen unanimous motion carried.
Thank you, Chair, that's all from the long order. Motion to approve.
Go ahead, Counselor Dillon.
I got one for youth affairs. Resolution of Ol' Walsu Tribal Council, Ol' Walsu Tribe accepting the reservation of Julian Spada Bear for ownership of the youth affairs. Motion.
Motion by Counselor Junior, seconded by Counselor Standing Soldier. Call for a vote. That's, uh, that's, and the council is still at eleven-thirty-three.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Laya Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Uh, Garfus Still?
No one.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Fourteen unanimous motion carried. Okay, is that everything?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve, agenda by Counselor Little Hawk Weston, seconded by Counselor Rosales, Counselor Weston. Roll call.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior? Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Laya Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Uh, Garfus Still?
Still.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Fourteen unanimous motion carried. Okay, at this time, are there any districts here? No, nothing, okay. We'll move on to our next agenda item, banishment?
None.
I see none.
Chair?
Yes.
I have a comment on that.
Is there a way, when those come up, that we can, um, like, so by constitution, we're one council meeting a month, right? But is there some kind of way we can have just a special from banishments? Because when there are banishments, you know, when it, when it comes up, like that last meeting in Mont Lake, that took probably enough to date. Is there a way we can make a motion here at council that is for banishments alone, and we can have a special every month just for them, maybe the middle of the month? Is there some way we can do that?
I see no problem with that. Got a comment here?
Uh, last week at Law and Order Committee, I did vote before the committee and requested, um, we discussed the banishments because of the, you know, happening for, and I told them that we needed to amend the ordinance, so that way it can stay in there that it's gonna be, um, monthly, like a special to be taken care of, and that way, um, it'll fall in line with that banishment procedure.
They're actually taking that law order?
No, um, they generally, they brought back, so if you look at the ordinance and see where they needed to make the amendment.
Hold on, I don't know where you're, but, I think.
Okay, so they're gonna move the, Chair, Counselor Rosales will, will do your line item here, motion to move up, uh, so I'll turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Let me just. Okay, so it is the, uh, resolution of the Ol' Walsu Tribal Council of the Ol' Walsu Tribe granting consent to use the Ol' Walsu rural water supply stem water pipeline right of way for broad, broadband fiber optics. And going to, okay, council, I'm gonna skip to the fourth, whereas, the U.S. Department of Commerce, National Communications and Information Administration, NTIA award the Ol' Walsu Tribe nineteen million, six-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars in 2022 that originally focused on a mixed technology bill using fiber and fixed wireless access. Whereas after efforts to acquire fixed wireless existing infrastructure on pending reservation or unsuccessful, Palmetto Engineering performed a project redesign in 2022 to focus on a five-G fixed wireless broadband network. And whereas the project redesign improved employment of broadband infrastructure through installation of enhanced site updates, new Ol' Walsu rural water supply system, water pipeline right of way approved for the Ol' Walsu Tribe by the Bureau of Youth Affairs. And whereas construction of the OSR WSS completed in 2016 is rural water system that is held in trust by United States for the Ol' Walsu Tribe, whose operations are overseen by the Bureau of Reclamation through cooperative agreements for operations, maintenance and replacement of the OSR WSS cord, operation and delivery stem interconnected to the core pipeline. And whereas the Ol' Walsu Tribe matched obligations under its cooperative agreement with DOR to repair replacement of the fiber optics that runs stalled by the, by SDADA monitoring system within both core and reservation delivery system pipeline right of way pursued to a final engineering report prepared by Morrison and Merrill Engineering Company of Billings, Montana, that indicated the fiber optics would have a lifespan up to the year 2020. And whereas the Ol' Walsu Tribe proposes to upgrade the existing fiber optics along the OSR WSS water pipeline to enhance operations and avoid catastrophic failure on the existing fiber that could result in up to a year or more without telemetry to operate a safe and effective water system. Whereas improvements upgraded existing fiber along the OSR WSS water pipeline will accommodate the five-G fixed wireless broadband network project resulting in significant cost savings for two critical infrastructure needs of the Ol' Walsu Tribe. And whereas the Ol' Walsu Tribe now desires to upgrade existing fiber that along its OSR WSS pipeline as a replacement effort authorized in cooperative agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation. And whereas the Ol' Walsu Tribe Economic and Business Development Committee met on the 21st April, November, 2025, and approved the installation and upgrade of fiber optics along the OSR WSS water pipeline to enhance pipeline operations and accommodate the broadband network project and recommends approval by the Ol' Walsu Tribal Council. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Ol' Walsu Tribal Council approved the installation of upgraded fiber optics along the OSR WSS water pipeline to enhance pipeline operations and accommodate broadband network project under the cooperative agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation. And be it further resolved, the Bureau of Reclamation and Bureau of Youth Affairs as Ol' Walsu Tribes trustee is requesting to fully cooperate with the Ol' Walsu Tribe and Ol' Walsu Forte Telecommunications LLC and its engineers in upgrading the fiber optics along the OSR WSS cord and reservation delivery system pipeline. And be it further resolved, the President of the Ol' Walsu Tribe is authorizing directly to expedite this agreement on behalf of the Ol' Walsu Tribe Certification. Motion.
Motion by Counselor Rosales, Counselor Cross.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, so this is basically saying that we're just gonna utilize the right of ways for, are, are using the right of ways for water and sewer?
No, rural water.
Rural waters? For on the?
Broadband.
Broadband?
Yeah. From both, yeah, sides, we're actually upgrading, helping them with their, their fiber optics.
And that's something we couldn't do for Golden West? I, the reason why I keep bringing it up over and over is because it's, it's like, we're not, we're not gonna have these services for a long time.
No, it's not with Golden West, it's a dual.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, we couldn't have did that for a reason why to stop Golden West in the first place.
You guys not having cross talk here? Have the chairman calling when we talk? Thank you.
I know, I had a phone. And I was asking questions and she answered. But I always wondered, because it seems like these services ain't gonna be to our communities for a very long time.
Um, I'm gonna have an attorney explain that real quick.
Thank you, good morning. Um, what this resolution allows is to use the existing infrastructure that already has that fiber, and they're just gonna improve the fiber, because the fiber along the line is now aged out. So we already have a cooperative agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation to do the OMR along that, and so this will just be a function of that operation maintenance and replacement. They'll put in a high-tech expanded fiber that can support five-G network, um, for our broadband infrastructure, as well as then provide a benefit for the SCADA monitoring along that. So, yes, that's correct. Um, we are gonna put out, yesterday, there was a utilities meeting, and there was a long discussion about the concerns that you're raising about the delay in the timeframe of the tribe's broadband project. Um, there are some reasons that happened. The original, uh, proposal was based on acquiring the existing infrastructure, and then that was actually not possible, so we had to redesign, got a new engineer, you redesigned. The engineer is Palmetto Engineering, and they're producing a one-page document that will give you a timeline of when they believe they can get, first of all, that core line in for fiber, and then all the branch lines out. Um, and they will have that to us like Monday or Tuesday. They did say yesterday that they intended to lay all of this line in March along the the Minutoni line. Thank you.
So it's an upgrade?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
But Golden West couldn't use that as an upgrade, I mean, we stopped them because of right of way, right? Golden West couldn't call it upgrading, we all could have fiber going on.
So, it's a little bit complicated, but Golden West receives federal grant dollars, and you receive the same federal grant dollars. If you want to allow Golden West, whether than your, rather than your own tribal company to do this work, we will have to return some of our grant money, because it's duplicative. You formed OLT to actually develop a tribally-owned broadband infrastructure system. The other issue with that is the more services that you allow Golden West to provide fiber on, you will lose customers, and the way that this whole, um, OLT setup is, is, has been, I guess, discussed, is you need all the customers to make enough revenue for it to operate on its own, and you won't have to then use your tribal dollars to supplement it. So you need all the customers on the reservation under your own system for that system to be viable, number one. Number two, if you allow Golden West to undertake some of this fiber optic, they're using the same grant money you are, and under twenty-five CFR 200, that's a duplicative service, and we would have to return funds, um, that we received from NTIA. That's the nineteen million and thirty-five million, that also is the reconnect.
So, yes, basically, we just don't wanna duplicate services. Counselor Cowan.
You know, I've been, excuse me, I've kinda been bringing that Golden West issue up for quite some time also, and, and, you know, I think it should be up to the people to make their, their decision on what provider they want us, wanna use. Right now, we're not giving them the opportunity. I, that's, that's all I'm saying. But on the other hand, uh, in here, it says to enhance the pipeline operation. How is this going to enhance the pipeline operation? Because I'm a little confused, if it's for, uh, the Lakota Health Communications, what services will rural water be receiving from this?
So, right now, there is already, uh, fiber optic line, so when you put in your Minutoni line?
Yeah, I was there.
Yes, and then on top of it, there is a fiber optic line?
Yeah, seen it.
And the fiber optic line had a twenty-year lifespan, and so that lifespan has passed, and so the idea now is that you will upgrade, you would've had to upgrade that, um, that fiber optic regardless, but now the technology is so advanced that you can put a new fiber in that will improve the SCADA system, which is the monitoring system of the wire as it goes through the system electronically, and then the fiber will be of an advanced level. And then the fiber will be of an advanced level that can also then accommodate the whole new broadband fiber system. And basically, I think kill two birds with one stone and one pot of money, so you're not spending excess money to do these two things at different times.
So basically, it's an upgrade?
I understand. The other thing is, I don't know why we're going through this. You know, the tribe owns that right of way already. Frank Means acquired it over 20-some years ago, and it's in the tribe's name. You know, if it's in tribal trust already, you could sign the document, chair. It's that simple. But of course, you could run into 169 regulations on right of ways, so I'll just throw that out there. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And we understand that, and this is just, it's, the maintenance will be way better, way better maintenance on this new fiber optic line, and it's an upgrade for us. Okay. Off for gold.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Bull Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston? Garfield Steele?
Yeah.
James Cross?
Yes.
Greg Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Fifteen yes, unanimous motion carried.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on to our next agenda item, and I'm going to turn it over to the secretary's office.
Thank you. Before you, I have request for approval for tribal council minutes for October 28th and 29th.
Motion.
Motion to approve the October 28th and 29th tribal council minutes.
Okay, motion by counsel, and then heart west is second by counsel Dillon. Roll call.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Bull Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston, Garfield Steele?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Greg Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Fifteen yes, unanimous motion carried.
Item number two is request to approve executive committee minutes for October 1st, 8:15 and 22nd, 25th.
Counselor Dillon. Motion to approve, October 1st, 8:15, 22nd, 25th. Okay, motion by counsel Dillon, second by counsel Cross. Roll call.
David Kelly?
No.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Bull Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston? Garfield Steele?
Yes.
James Cross? James Cross?
Yes.
Greg Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Fourteen yes, unanimous, motion carried.
Next, I have an ordinance, and I will read the ordinance. Ordinance of the Olasun Tribal Council of the Olasun Tribe amending the Order of Business for Tribal Council Agenda Established Other Ordinance Number 1301 by Creating Agenda Line Item for Complaints in accordance with Ordinance 20-74, Chapter 6, Section 2.6, Initial Presentation to Tribal Council. And we have the sovereignty clause, section 16 clause, section 14 clause. Whereas on January 9th, 2013, the Olasun Tribal Council enacted Ordinance Number 1301 establishing the Order of Business for Tribal Council Agenda Line Item. And whereas on November 24th, 2020, the Olasun Tribal Council enacted Ordinance 20-74 adopting a comprehensive quota of ethics and removal procedure for elected officials, which included the procedure of the submission of complaints against an elected official. And whereas on November 19th, 2025, the Law and Order Committee discussed the Order of Business for Tribal Council Agenda and finds that in accordance with the ordinance governing the submission of complaints, that the agenda line item should be created. Now therefore be it ordained that the Olasun Tribal Council, the Olasun Tribe hereby amends the Order of Business for Tribal Council established under Ordinance Number 1301 by creating an agenda line item for complaints in accordance with Ordinance 20-74, Chapter 6, Section 6.2, Initial Presentation to Tribal Council and adds a line item as follows. Agenda line item 1, Districts 2, Vanishment 1, 3, Complaints 4, Secretaries Report 5, Compteur's Report 6, Trab- Treasurers Report 7, Standing Committee Business Rotating and Alphabetic Order 8, Presidents Report 9, Vice Presidents Report 10, Fifth Members Report 11, Chief of Police Report and 12 items added by Agenda by adjournance vote. And be it further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect upon enactment by the Tribal Council and shall supersede, repeal and replace all prior inconsistent laws of the Olasun tribe certification.
Motion. Motion by counsel Weston, second by counsel of the little hot west. Roll call.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Bull Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston, Garfield Steele? James Cross?
Yes.
Greg Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Fifteen unanimous, motion carried.
That is all I have for my office. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, Compteur's Report.
She just went right up there, she'll be right back.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to the Treasurers' office.
Good morning, everybody. I emailed the whole report to Stacy so she could floor the issues yesterday. Included in the packet, we have a letter from Wickwing. Oh, my name is Cora Whitehorse, I'm a senator of the town. For Moses' record. So the first thing I have is a letter from Wickwing, and that's just a generic letter. I didn't think we're about to change the date because it has 2021. It was supposed to be for 2022. And it just shows what the process is, and that's just for your information, process for the audit. The second thing in there is the drawdown resolution that was passed by XB. That's the process to get the line's income, so the amount is on there. For that, we're just waiting on BIA to finish that. Usually it takes two days, but Gina's email said the letter wasn't attached, so Stacy resented everything yesterday. So that should be coming soon. The next thing in the report is the bank balances from At First National Bank. And then the Native American Bank statement, the last one I used to come October 31. Then we have the Edward Jones statements. And it should be more. There's 200 and something in the process, but it hasn't been posted yet.
I have a question.
Okay.
Question.
Question. Go ahead, counsel.
The bank balances, we do have some that are in the mind, so both going to be, money going to be coming into those line items. Is it going to reverse the cost reimbursement?
I'm going to pull them up. Okay, the first one is general fund, and we're just waiting on the drawdown for that. I need to know the amount of the drawdown. The second one is gaming commission, and they haven't received a piece because the casino has not had money. But with the loan, they should be cutting positive in that as well for their device fees. The Coda Prairie Ranch, they are working on their plan to bring their deficit down. OST Transportation, that's a matter of reconciliation between the terms and the accountants. They are working on that. Tony said she would involve herself with that at the next meeting. I don't know if it's just lack of communication or what. The next one is the state reimbursement.
No, the OYAC, the middle store.
Oh, is that?
Yeah, right, under the transportation, actually, item down.
Okay, OYAC general fund. They just paid for their gas. So they're usually negative when it's said to pay for their gas.
That's on his break for 3,000.
Yeah, he's going down there now.
The state reimbursement?
That's the youth shelter, and that's their food costs. They have received money from CPS and from victim services to assist them. That was a higher amount if you look at last month and the month before, and the month before and the month before for about a year. But they have been receiving help to bring that cost down because they weren't able to do full reimbursements with the state because they didn't have a policy in place. But I believe that position in the library is, and John was working on the policy. Title 19 reimbursement is the medical assistance for the recipients of Medicare and Medicaid. That's upstairs. The process for that changed recently. So some of those reimbursements have been there for six to nine months. They keep requesting more information from us. They used to be just a form. And now they have to give more information. They have to give copies of the Medicaid cards, not just the numbers. They have to give dates of birth. They have to fill out the form exactly as they wanted. Sometimes they send them back and say, you missed the check mark here or something. And those reimbursements used to take 30 days to get, but now they take six months to a year for reimbursement. So that's in the negative. It wasn't in the negative last month, too, like 18,000.
Question.
Go ahead.
I ask that question of the treasurer because we have our district members that have to go through this process. When they go to a medical appointment, if they have Medicaid, they have to, you know, give all that information to upstairs, to the ladies, and then they get assistance. But when they go to their appointments, they have to make sure that form they give them is signed off by the provider, right?
Right.
And a lot of times, they don't come back with it, or they don't get it signed. So then when they ask for help again to go to another appointment, they get denied up here because of that. That's why I want the treasurer to kind of elaborate a little bit on this because it's important that we turn those forms in with the provider signing off, saying they did come to their appointment. And so I think that's the part that's missing. We're always getting calls on that, too. So I think that, I just want to give a kind of touch on that, you know? Now that you said it changed, and you're asking for more information now.
Right, and the person who signs it, it has to be an authorized provider. They used to accept like deceptionist signatures, but they don't anymore. It has to be either a nurse or a doctor who signs it. Or a builder, if they have one. I think the last thing in the report is the general fund budget summary. Counselor did make a motion to stop all travel for everyone that's over budget, so I have stopped travel for anyone that is over budget in their travel. Or not counsel, but finance committee. Are there any questions on the summary? There are some programs that haven't spent much of that money. Not any, but much of it, like THPO around the center, 18,000.
I do have a question on, you know, we're getting calls from, where you had, originally, there was a schedule or calendar that was given out to about long-term loans and short-term loans, and then all of a sudden it got changed. And it was done by the chief of staff, and I know you concurred on it. So how are we going to help those employees? Some of them are saying they're getting on probation, or hoping they can make a loan for Christmas, but then all of a sudden this came up. So how can we help these employees that might be getting on probation? They were hoping, when they look at that calendar, they're waiting to be able to make a long-term loan, but then this came up. So then it kind of put everything to a stop for them. Now they're kind of reaching out, and these are some of my constituents in my district. So how can we, maybe some of others were getting calls, I don't know, but I wanted just to address you on it, to see what your thoughts were on that. So a lot of what I do now, they're also asking about merit, their awards, or their incentives. And I know that we're discussing that finance committee. I think they're reading, I don't know why we're going to have a, well, we're going to have a finance working session first weekend in December at the Prairie Ranch. And I think that issue has come up. So now we're, and I know it's in policy, first non-policy ordinance, so basically allows for them to give, but it gives them a certain amount that they can give out. You know, so they want to know about that part, too. So could you kind of? So could you kind of give us some answers on those two questions?
On the loan program, you guys put the Chief of Staff in charge. So basically, when he does the fund, then I will concur with it because he put him in charge. So if you want him to do something different, I think it would be a good idea to talk to the Chief of Staff.
Okay, we can do that. Maybe we'll have to address that with him in Finance Committee because they had an original calendar, and I see that because HR sent it out to us all of a sudden. But then all of a sudden, it changed, and he changed it. So now that's what's hurting them. So I think when we get back at Finance Committee, we'll ask him to be there.
And then on the merit, there is a policy in place for them. And I know that when we discussed it last week, the Chief of Staff was going to follow the policy. So if the programs have the money in their budget, the maximum is 3,000. And it's supposed to be based on merit and performance and evaluations, but in that same policy, the next line says all merits must be equal.
Yeah, that's what comes up.
He has to follow the policy. So as long as the program director has it in their budget, and it says they will be doing it in December. So I know he has received several pens, but they are to be given in the month of December.
What comes up is, and I think we've kind of been dealing with it in the past, and now the new council says, "How come you did that?" You know, at the Finance Meeting, "How come did you guys do that?" You know, about giving everybody that same amount across the board. So again, we discussed it Finance again. Some of the council brought it up, that if we're going to just allow for these ones to get it and these ones don't get it, then they always say, well, everybody has to get it across the board. But it has to be that same amount. So is that what you just read in there? It has to be equal?
Yep.
So if some programs have it in their budget and they're going to pay out $3,000 to their employees, let's say there's other programs that didn't budget. Are we going to have to pick them up to do that? I guess that's the question some of them are asking. So maybe to clarify that, too.
That policy has been in place for years. It hasn't been amended for years. So each director should have had a copy, and it's their responsibility to run their program. If they chose to budget a merit, then that's a benefit for their employees. If they don't have the funding or if they chose not to, then that's a loss for their employees. But nowhere in there does it say that the tribe will pick up any merit, that the tribe will general fund or whoever.
So we even have not only general fund, our federal programs, but we also have indirect cost. So we need to probably maybe come to an understanding with the indirect cost, too, because we're also asking how we can be able to give a merit award. And we know how and where we're at right now and how we just recently had to get paid and put back on to 40 hours. So we need to maybe clarify some of these things for our employees. So that's something I just wanted to touch on.
And there has been a discussion with the Chief of Staff and HR and the Comptroller because we did the back pay with supplemental income. They understand that we probably won't be able to do a merit.
Or the indirect cost.
Or the indirect cost.
Or step-in pieces.
Or step-in pieces for indirect cost. Unless we're issuing out sanctions, there's no increase.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor. So listening to you and Sonia's conversation there, I guess we should go back to the old traditional words. Need to act like Oyaski. That way, everybody gets the same amount. But you said it was in policy, the 3,000 max. And you say it went back a few years. So who didn't read the policy when you allowed $7,500 to be paid to employees? And let's put a good excuse together, not?
The council took that action. That wasn't a director. That wasn't the comptroller. That wasn't me. The council took that action.
So that being said, councils can do that every year. We're going to get involved as directors, saying incentives have to be paid. Need to act like Oyaski again. All my relatives need to get all that money. So why don't we just leave it in the hands where it belongs? The directors, let them read that policy. That's for them. That's their job. And when they come crying to us, send them back to the directors.
That's actually been a discussion, allowing them to do their jobs. So...
Next year, I'm not going to... Next year, it'll be... Hold on, running, so Carol talked away, and then we could talk. This isn't a retirement job for me.
That was what was said in one of those demonstrations. And it did happen. It looked after work in the circle, but just letting you know.
Stay quiet if you'll stay in here. Any other questions?
I, one more, I just want to thank you, Cora, for giving us the copies of these checks from the marijuana account. And it's good that we can see what's been spent in that account and what's left. But, you know, we really have to maybe order for the ability to sit down with the Gaming Commission because I don't know if they're in a mind like that and somebody got us about a budget. Why did they get a budget? You know, so that was asked of me actually last night. And so I was thinking, well, maybe that needs to be about that to long order. We need to be with the Gaming Commission and see, you know, because they do get a budget out of our general fund. And so, yeah, out of the... But they do have money that comes to them and they get paid. So I think we need to probably discuss the out-of-long order committee, you know, on it. But I just wanted to share that with committees that do sit on long order committee. But, you know, just looking at it, I... I'm glad you're adhering to our actions of Finance Committee. And I don't, I really think we need to, you know, really take a look at our budgets. I know that we're going to be having a working session, so we need to really look at some of the blind items in our own budget for our council. So I think that I just wanted to kind of share that with the committees. I hope we can get a good amount of us at that 81. Is it four? It is six. Yeah, okay.
On the marijuana project, I have a report. It's about 600 pages. But I have an outline of it, just a spreadsheet of what's actually going to spend. We went through all the committee actions, all the council actions, and we have copies of all the checks that came up. So everything that was distributed from that account, when it was cash and after it became a checking account. And you know, I never agreed with doing cash. That's why while I was there, we didn't do cash. I refused every time until I went to the hospital. Then that month that I was gone, there was so much money going out.
I remember that. I mean, yeah, I do remember that. And I think it's not good to have cash.
Right.
Because you always have concerns about it.
It's hard to keep a record. On the Gaming Commission, I agree. I think we need to work with them that we're required to have them in law because we have casinos. But I think they need to figure out what their budget actually is, how much they get for device fees, and follow that budget.
Yeah, I think we do. That's why I said maybe long order committee needs to meet with them now and kind of go over that, too. Maybe, I don't know if it's going to happen before our working session, but I really do think we need to keep that mind and bring them to the long order committee, too. So I'm hoping, you know, if Lawrence is listening and Philip, I hope you guys are two are listening, that we can work on that with long order committee.
Right, because they can't stop their expenditures for salaries because we are required by law.
Yeah.
Counselor Weston. Thank you, Judge. I was approached by Warren, and he asked me why that third position wasn't being advocated.
For the Gaming Commission?
For the Gaming Commission.
That's up to you guys. Long order committee.
Okay. So that would be the, okay, we'll do that then. Thank you. Any other questions, Counselor Chris?
So Cora, working session will be... Will we discuss these merits and all of that the next week in the Finance Committee working session?
I don't know if they're going to discuss merits, but I do know we're going to be going over general fund and IDC.
Okay. When is that set up?
Not this weekend, but the next weekend.
4:56 at the Prairie Ranch.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve a report.
Say. Approved by Counselor Dillon, seconded by Counselor Lunderman. Who approved it? Oh, call.
David Kelly?
No.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
George Dierma Jr.? Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenall Senior?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
No.
Ryan Champion Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Garfield Steele?
Yeah.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Charlie Little?
Yes.
14 has to know we're not voting motion carried.
Good question. Good question. Because I think we need to kind of be around you. I think we're trying to address the CKP. And so, yeah, he's sitting here. So I don't know. We need to, there's a deadline, the end of December. So that's why he's here. And I know Land Committee did address it. We moved it to Finance. And from Finance, it went to a due diligence. And the due diligence was done. And now he's back here. He wasn't on the agenda, but we took it along. Norman did through land. And so we need to kind of have you here. So you can kind of, you can kind of hear us for now. We can or cannot.
Counselor Stanislaw. To uncomplicate things, we can just run it through because this answer didn't come from you. Or it's too late, we already accepted your report, but... We're going to wait all the way from land, and he's going to be here till tomorrow.
Just do it right now.
Can you give us the answer that we need concerning CKP? Well, the question is, we sent up to you was, do we have the ability to make payments?
CKP doesn't work that way.
Well, we need to hear it from you.
Yeah, CKP doesn't work that way. You find the land that's qualified. You set up a policy for that, and then they pay the premiums for that prior year for whatever you earn the next year.
And the major knows about it, too, so...
So we wouldn't have to put money upfront.
Since we want the future. Okay.
So the way, it's actually a USDA pasture range forage insurance policy. But the way the policy works is you don't pay the premium at the front end. You pay the premium at the back end. So you enroll all of the property, and at the end of the year is when you have to pay the premium in. So you should have generated enough of an indemnity or the insurance to cover your premium. So you don't have any upfront money.
Counselor, was that a motion to move, move down? Take care of it? I think it would be best because he'll be sitting here for quite a while. Yeah. So we got a motion by Counselor Standing Soldier, seconded by Counselor Little Hawk Weston and Counselor Lunderman. Taylor, if you could stick around and get this taken care of. Roll call, Secretary. What's motion?
And just for clarification, it's to move up CKP on the agenda. David Kelly?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
George Dierma Jr.?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenall Senior?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Lyle Weston? Ryan Champion Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Garfield Steele?
Yeah.
James Cross? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Charlie Little?
Yes.
14, yes, was not voted motion carried. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Land Chairman, Chair. Okay, acting as Land Chairman for our missing Land Chairman, I think right now CKP has given quite a few presentations to us. And that being said, is Counsel okay with giving approval? Or would you guys like to go ahead and hear another presentation?
I'm turning it like five times.
Did you?
I'm pretty persistent.
My question is, when we talk about payment, how much we're going to have to pay on the tribal side, that's kind of what I think we need to probably hear.
Sure.
Okay, so if you can share that with us. I think our treasurer needs to be there, so...
Yeah, so as far as payment goes, like Majo was saying, it's typical for you guys to make benefits in the front half of the year and not have to pay that premium. Looking at the historical data here, there are six out of 10 years that you will receive a bill in September, okay? Now, what happens is we put you on notes called a payment plan with the carrier, and they defers your payment until 3/1. Now, when the benefits come in, typically, they will pay off that bill, so you have zero out of pocket. Out of a 10-year period, looking at this quote historically, there were two years that were a loss, meaning that you would have had to pay them to the program, okay? That first one was back in 2019 at $1,076,000, and the second one was in 2018 at $1,135,000. Now, those are two years that you did not make enough benefits to pay the full premium. But one advantage to CKP that we have is we have what's called the City First Mortgage Program. And what Cora was kind of hinting to is we put you on the City First Mortgage Program. This defers your payment until the following year. So for example, if we were to enroll for 2026, and for some reason, we got rained out, we did not make enough benefits to pay the premium, we would then put you on this City First Mortgage Plan to defer your payment for 2027. Your 2027 benefits would then pay off your 2026 balance. So that's a program that all of our tribes utilize in the event that they do have to pay a premium. Now, in this historical data here, eight out of 10 years, you guys win in this program as much as 4.8 million back in 2022, 4.3 million... back in 2022, $4.3 million back in 2024, but when we look at the last 10 years as an average, we're about $1.4 million in net indemnities, okay? That means that you'd be paying your premium off and receiving checks if you're not at $1.4 million. Over the last 10 years, you guys would have received $14.5 million out of this program. Now, I just want to add, CKP has generated about $218 million in net indemnities for tribes in using this program. And I think Major wanted to share a little bit about Pro as far as their success in the program. Is that correct?
Is that okay?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
So I just wanted to let you know that CKP Insurance went to various tribes and got them signed up. They happened to come to the Pro Tribe and got them signed up, and I was not involved. I didn't know CKP and what they were doing. They enrolled all of the 100% tribal tracts into the program, and then the tribe said, can we do this? Is this really okay? Are we going to be able to cover the cost, and is it allowable to enter that land into the program even if there's a lease on it? And so the tribe asked me to research that, and I did. I actually went back to Washington and met with USDA, at the time Sac Fushin was there, and also met with the attorneys that they had assigned onto that review process. And we determined that, yes, it was absolutely allowable because the tribe, as the manager and owner of its trust lands, had the right to insure their lands in this program. And then also, we added later all the lands where the tribe had a majority interest or over 51% interest in the tract. Pro Tribe has been in the program now for, I believe, like four years.
Four years.
And they have generated over $6 million in benefit. They haven't had a year where they've had to pay in any of the costs because we've managed to do that. However, there is a fund set aside out of that indemnity, so that if you do run into a problem later that you're going to owe in some if you have a wet year, and then you have a fund to actually cover that cost out of your indemnity. You save a portion to make sure you can cover it. The other thing is, with the money that comes in, then you set up an agricultural infrastructure fund, and with that fund, then you can provide benefits to your ag producers. Those are allowable. Like you can provide supplemental feed, you can provide some fencing, water development, and other items that are beneficial to your on reservation ag industry. So that's the experience that we've had. My research and all was done on behalf of the Pro Tribe to just ensure that there was not any problem with the USDA rules and regulations for entering into the program.
So does it have to be ag? Pardon? Does it have to be ag?
It does. It has to be fed to the spirit of agriculture.
But the spirit of agriculture goes a long way. I will tell you that. Pro Tribe has done some infrastructure development that promotes ag, like fairgrounds and so forth.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Good afternoon. I was there at the meeting, and I had asked if you and Director Richards would be able to break down per district, how many acreage. Was there anybody moving on that?
Oh, um, I can get that answered for you here probably pretty quickly with my team. I wasn't prepared for that today, but I remember that question. I apologize.
Because I know as far as medicine is concerned, we're pretty drop street, but you go down a few miles to Lake Ridge, and they're not. So that was a concern we had because we had different, different areas are handing over water reservations, so it's a big reservation. So we have different, different, different amounts of rainfall even within this reservation.
Sure. Good, good question. Um, the way that, is this one on here?
No.
The way that it works is we would provide the tribe one check for the indemnities, and then we could provide you a breakdown of the indemnities per grid, and those grids are how you would be separated per district. So we would be able to give you a breakdown as far as how much money came per district for you. It would be up to the tribe to disperse those funds as they come in. They wouldn't be separate checks from the insurance company, but it would be one check in total, and then the tribe would be responsible for breaking that down through that agricultural infrastructure fund that Major was talking about, and that's totally doable for you.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes.
Counselor. Counselor Standing Soldier.
So the agricultural infrastructure fund.
Mike?
Agricultural infrastructure fund. Is that agricultural product, or can we use it to say, because hemp was classified as agricultural product by USDA, would that be able to pay for a plant?
What's your opinion of that?
I mean, a plant to make product from hemp?
So, so far, so far with this program, there's a lot of latitude that has been provided to tribes on how to use that agricultural infrastructure fund. It's basically for you to reinvest in these lands as a benefit to the lands, as a benefit to enhance your agricultural industry. That's what it's for. We haven't come across that question. I haven't seen it, and I've looked at a lot of the activities that they have been attempting, but I would say I haven't seen any real narrow sidebars or limitations on a tribe's ability to utilize that infrastructure fund for a variety of ag purposes. Not a good answer, but not yes or no. But I haven't seen anything that would bar that.
I would agree with that.
So is it worth taking a chance on?
Worth taking a chance on this or on the hemp?
Well, if we take a chance on this, it's going to provide for the hemp.
Oh. Well, this program is one of the few programs that has been opened up for tribes to actually participate in USDA benefits. As you all know, USDA is like the biggest state in the country, and tribes have not been able to participate in a lot of these programs as a tribe for tribal dollars to assist. Because you know, a lot of people are not going to be able to afford this insurance, a lot of small producers. So you're providing a benefit across the board that will help. This is one program where tribes have been able to participate, and that has been an opening that has been quite beneficial for a lot of other tribes. So it looks like a program that's viable.
Thank you. Counselor Kelly.
You know, I'm open to all dialogue, but you know, you keep bringing up the USDA, and we're already on the hook with the USDA for the FSA loans. Are we going to be on the hook in the future because we're having major issues with them FSA loans? They've been hanging around for years, and we still can't get rid of them. Just long-range planning.
Thanks.
I don't know all the details of your FSA loans. However, this is not a loan. This is not a loan of money that you have an obligation to pay back to USDA. This is an insurance policy. Your obligation would be only to cover the premium, which you cover from the insurance returns is how you cover the premium. So it is distinguishable from the loans that tribes entered into and have those long-term obligations, which are a handful for a lot of tribes when they get into those USDA loans.
Any other questions? There. Go ahead. Motion to approve. Motion to, Counselor London, seconded by Counselor Standing Soldier. Did you have a question? Second. Counselor Little. So you're approving that? This is motion to approve. Roll call.
Question, question.
Go ahead.
How much money do we need to set aside to, to, I guess, get involved or sign on or whatever?
A good reserve fund would be about $1.2 million. That would be in the event that you had a really rained out year, but like I was telling.
So we're not putting more money up front?
The funding money.
Let's round the book. Secretary.
Major, is it in insurance? I just want to make sure. In your own, yeah, PRF insurance.
David Kelly?
Well, for the record, based on attorney's recommendation, knowing she's a sitting board member, yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Not voting.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Not voting.
Garfield Steele?
Voting, yeah.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
12, yes, three not voting. Motion carried.
Can I do one last comment here?
Yes.
So the deadline to enroll into the program is 12/1. The next steps will be, I'll be creating an application for signature from Chair here. I'll need to get that back and sign before 12/1. So I'll be in touch with probably Major on that and Frank as soon as possible, okay? Appreciate you guys. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you for coming today. I know it's kind of unexpected for Esplora.
Yeah.
How was able to get it worked out?
Thank you, Tyler. Okay. Well, I'll let you down. Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, go ahead. You have a question?
So now that you agreed to enroll and vote down, you think that needs to be a motion to have the agreement brought back to XP for approval for president's signature?
That was my next motion.
Okay.
Okay, so motion by Counselor Standing Soldier, seconded by Counselor London. To forward to XP? Yes, bring back the agreement for signature. Roll call. Watch it.
Cora, do we have to open any other accounts? Do we have to open any other accounts?
No. They hold on to it.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Not voting.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Not voting.
Garfield Steele?
Yeah.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Well, 12, yes, three not voting. Motion carried.
No, I'm okay.
Real quickly, everybody, I'm not on the Board of PRF. I don't have any sort of formal relationship, so I'm not on the Board of PRF. PRF is a private company that is, has agents that are certified by USDA. And if you look at the due diligence report that Ray put together, she has documentation in there. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Chair.
Can I have a response?
The reason I said that was because when the gentleman first brought his presentation, he gave us a booklet, and your name was listed in there as a sitting board member. Hence, that was one of my questions for the due diligence. I will go back and I will pull that document up because that's one of the reasons why I wanted to go back for some due diligence, some due process, and see where it was at.
So just real quickly, my name was probably in a booklet because I provided a seminar on allotted land and how allotted land is managed by the United States, and how we could actually put allotted land into the program under the RMA rules. And I did a presentation and did research, and so I was asked to present that at their seminar, but I am not a board member, so maybe I was listed in a brochure for that presentation.
That's what I believe happened as well. She's not listed as a board member, but if you do find it, please share it with me. I'd love to see it.
Go ahead.
I think, I know, Major, you were probably listed on there, but I think that when we asked for the due diligence, which some of the committee wanted done that day, I asked you to step away from the due diligence, and which you did. And so the legal office was able to do the due diligence, and that was good because today, I'm glad that you did explain what they're about. I think that's where we wanted to hear that. And so just being not voted was because I'm a landlord, and so I don't know how this would affect allotted land that the BIA, you know, holds in trust for us, but I'm a landlord, and I know there's a lot of landlords that are probably listening today that may have questions. So that's why we're only talking about tribal trust land.
Correct.
Today.
Yes, yes. 2026 will be only tribal trust, right?
Yes, that's what I need to kind of.
Okay, perfect.
All right, thank you. We don't have a challenge out here yet, so we wanted to control.
I think she's up there.
I love this. Can I have a?
Yes, go ahead. I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, my report's going to be very short anyway, so I'm going to go through my calendar. I didn't have anything prepared in written form, but at 1 o'clock, we have our Baker Tilly called, so I'm hoping I can go ahead and be ahead of Alicia.
Thank you. You're fine. You can go.
Okay, so from the last meeting in Wamble till now, my main priority has been three things. The audit, 425s, and our indirect cost, or indirect cost proposal. Everything goes hand in hand. Everything is kind of tied up, waiting for the 22 audit to be completed. With us, everything is turned in. Everything, we're waiting for Whitley. Every once in a while, they send us something, maybe clarification. Our target is 12/31 next, well, almost next month, but I see us finishing maybe a couple weeks early. I don't want to say that as a fact, but that's the way I feel in my experience now with doing these audits. Next, we start at 23. We have a deadline of getting our suspense list cleaned by January 31st, 26th. We cannot proceed with our indirect cost rate till 22 is back and filed. So I have numbers ready, but we can't submit anything at this time. I followed through with ARPA reporting. I need to know that exterior, interior and completion dates of each building. I've been asking, I can get you the dollar amount, which I provided in Womble. But I want to know, I'm going to do a graph so I can see it because I learned five hands-on. I want to know how much each of these buildings are, what we spent, what's left. Because everybody asks me and asks you, we all have questions coming from my mother. She's like, "That building's too small," you know? And everybody has those questions. So that's another one of my priorities. Something that is going on, went yesterday, and I was very happy to see the president there and to see Mr. Lyle Weston there, was our 425 training with Ben Abumsa from the Kiba Institute. I have wished to see more there because I want to see that leadership supports FAO. We create the laws, we enforce them. That's all we do. And we just need to keep working together hand in hand. And I think that's my report, unless anybody has any questions or clarification that you need from me.
Go ahead, Counselor Cross.
I'll take the Tony Bier report. Last Friday, we did have some discussion on our buildings. And just the beginning of discussion on the transition of the buildings. So I think with their report, I think that would tie into our building. Once we start moving here, that bit and the completion dates are getting closer, we probably should look at those numbers. And according to our districts. And so this morning, I'm glad you got the notes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Also, on that note, December 24th, we have to have all the data. And now in 13 months, we have to have it all spent. But I was told, or I read, was that the buildings are 6.2, 5 million B for the actual construction, 1.2 for the first year of operations. What we have to figure something out is that we cannot put that 1.2 in the bank. It has to be spent, so we're going to have to do maybe prepaid insurance, prepaid light, something. Anything that's not spent by December 31st, 2026 will have to be sent back to Washington. So I want to go to an exact penny. We do not give money. We never had an opportunity like this. So I want to know down to the penny.
So Tony, this was all set up from last administration. But my understanding from, you know, looking into all of this, all that startup money was to furnish and, you know, provide everything that a building is going to need to get up to snuff to operate, right? And that's what these funds are for?
You mean the 1.2?
Yes.
And I think each district makes that determination on how they want to furnish, how they want to, how spend it. So I think you're right, but I can't say, or we can't dictate to a district and say, "That's what you have to spend it on."
But it is 1.2 though.
Correct.
And it is available.
Yes, it is.
Okay. One thing I know, I pushed when I was in the districts was emergency equipment, emergency generators. I don't see any of them, anybody building stockin' houses. Something to think about. Any other questions?
Could we just maybe for down the road, Tony, if we could just get a breakdown of your report of something that you, what you just said?
That's exactly what I'm working on. I've contacted two of the owner's reps. So I just have one more left. And like I said, I see when I learn, I have to do it hands-on. So I can run a report from this date to this date and tell you what we spent and what's left. But I'm going to see it in pretty form, so I want to share that with you.
Yeah.
And again, that is one of my priorities. But at 1 o'clock, again, audits are my focus right now.
Okay, so I just wanted to put that in there because I need you, we need to share that with our districts. And I think that from the beginning, when we first approved the multi-purpose buildings, some of us were on council during that time. So by minutes and by actions we've taken, we set aside a certain amount for construction, a certain amount for O and M, for, to O and M those buildings. So now there's all kinds of questions coming up about, from Chuck, the loss with property supply, about insurance, you know, all these different things. So we need to, somewhere down the road, if you could provide us just something like what you just said to me about the breakdown. I think that we need to probably, somewhere in finance community, we need to kind of discuss some of those things. Some of the buildings that I did complete, like Lake Creek District and Womble, Eagle Nest, and probably Pass Creek. But some of us are still kind of coming along here, so we're going to have time. But I just wanted to put that out there, give us the breakdown.
That's my plan. All right. Thank you.
Motion to approve. Wait, do you have a question? Go ahead, Counselor Steele.
Well, just real quick, I was just going to recommend that if you could send a copy to the districts of expenditures for each building that we occurred so far.
I did provide that in your packet last in Womble. So it's there.
The reason why, I mean, you know, I mean, I don't know how there's misinformation getting out there, but, you know, I was reading a clown page and it said that each, our district got like 700,000 or some for a building. You know, and people run with that. Yeah, people run with that, and so I would like to see a copy.
Sure, I would give it all out with, you know, maybe a graph. You know, this much interior is left, this is what we've completed. Same thing with exterior. And I need a completion date. I need these, not because you're asking me, but I need to know. Our people need to know, and ARPA reporting needs to know.
And for some of those comments on that page, maybe if you do it crayons, you'll understand.
All right.
What comment, what comment, what comment? I have is, I know Mr. Dillon, Councilman Dillon made a motion. I remember, I seconded to have an audit done on these nine projects. Has that been moved forward? We've asked, he actually was the one that made the motion to go in and find out about how much we actually spent in each district, right? Right?
Yeah, you'll be answered.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, my concern was, are we getting our dollars worth of a building that we, that we put out on bids? Because, you know, I'm not calling anybody a crook, but some of these buildings are far from over. They have a lot of construction left to do. And I don't understand why they're dragging their feet. Because ours went up pretty fast, and I'm not bragging or anything, but the thing about it is, everyone should have went up just as fast. That money was there, they got their money, the contracts were awarded. What the hell is the holdup? And that's what we need to find out because we shouldn't be ripped off on all of our ventures that we tried. You know, I mean, we need somebody to safeguard our interests because we're losing every time we do something. And what it is, there's an issue with putting the bolts into the cement to bring up the girders and stuff. Well, somebody's got to be held accountable for that. Because that's part of construction. And we need to hold them companies accountable. Because every day that money, that amount of money gets smaller with all these tariffs and all that crap that's going on. It just makes it harder to get things done at that cost. And so that was my biggest concern, and I'm still standing by that because we need to get our dollars worth. You know, we have reputation of being a strong tribe and stuff, but we're letting people get over on us, and we need to stop that. And I got one more question, Mr. Chairman. Yomini asked me if we could release those numbers on the construction and everything, where we're at. And I think we should put it out there so everybody will know. We're not doing anything underhanded or not, but I think those numbers need to be put out there for everybody's information.
I agree.
Because if we don't, then we act like we're hiding something. But reality is, what I wanted was somebody to come in, neutral party, and look at all of these sites and give us a report that says this more, this should have been done way before now. The money was allocated, some of the money was spent, we know that. And I think we need to hold the contractors accountable. And I'm not saying this to be mean to anybody, but we just need to be, hold everybody accountable. We need to hold them because they hold us accountable.
And the quality of the materials in the building, that's what I think. Because I see those old ones where, when we were kids, my grandpa, we didn't have running water, so we'd go into Kyle and shower, you know? And then that next round building. And that one is probably more rundown than the first one. Now, this generation, they're building these new multi-purpose buildings. And if it's all plastic, they're going to collapse before that first one that was ever built.
That's why the action was taken, so who's going to handle that? Who's going to be responsible for doing that?
I guess we could discuss it. No one identified who, you wanted to come in as a third-party cram, or do you have suggestions?
I think we need to do that in finance, on that working session.
Okay.
And then so we can talk about it in depth.
Should we have Chuck there? Because property is a part-
We need Chuck there, and we need a neutral party, somebody not from here, somebody that's going to represent us as a tribe.
Okay.
And so we can look at it, and look at through, look at the project through their eyes and get an honest opinion.
Right, is this the quality of money?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, guys, we don't have one.
We had a motion.
Because we need somebody that comes in because we sided with them.
I use this, yeah, reject. So if I can get with legal and you guys, information at least to be put out. What I can't put out, I should say, on behalf of the council and finance as an FAO.
I don't think there's anything hidden with the buildings. I referred it to ARPA, I gave it to the council, it just wasn't broken down by Neil or Shigo or whatever, but I gave total amount.
Well, I guess what I was trying to say is, just for future reference, for any, any of the people without financials in the FAO, I could email me at l.gat.jack.
And Mr. Yomni is the media person for the old lawsuit tribe. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Lunderman. Second by Councilman Dillon.
Tom Chubb.
Tom Chubb is important. Go on.
David Kelly. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Sr.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Sr.
Yes.
Sonya Little Hawk Weston. Garfield Steele.
Yeah.
James Cross. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Hope you have a nice weekend.
Thank you for your report, Council. 13 yes, one no, one not voting, motion carried. I believe we have lunch coming in here. They're setting up right now. So we're going to break for lunch, be back here at 2:00 PM sharp. Exactly. Sharp. It is 1:00 PM, 1:03 PM right now. Oh, let's do a meal prayer before we break for lunch. Councilman Lunderman, can you give us the meal prayer? God bless.
Yomini, turn that off while we're eating, or? You got people in there missing teeth and stuff. All right, Yomini, turn that off while we have lunch.
Asking for those tariff fees back. That we dedicate this money back, but tariff ordinance says thirty-three percent goes to the districts and it's split up nine ways. So that portion of the tariff ordinance would have to be waived. Because if we're dedicating this back to them, then we're violating the tariff ordinance where that percentage is split up into thirty-three point three percent. So, I mean, I want an answer from our attorney first.
Chair, Steve Gunn is online.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This would operate as a one-time or ad hoc amendment for this project only. That would dedicate the revenue from this project only back to this project. So it operate as a one-time or ad hoc amendment. It wouldn't change the underlying tariff ordinance for all purposes, but it would change it for purposes of this project.
Okay. The reason why I asked is because we should waive before they paid, these were paid already. And so, you know, and they wasn't going to cancel them. But our district, under Mr. Paul Ponting, and he was the chairman, and I brought this report to our council, was to waive the tariff fees and it was approved at our district. And I assumed it was approved here because I know I presented it and Stacy said you couldn't find it, right Stacy? But, so, our district wanted to do the same thing, to put the money back into the project. So if this goes, then maybe that's something my district could look at.
Yeah, definitely.
Counselor, do you have a question?
You know, I think Steve Gunn is online, but I, if I recall, there was tariff fees put back into these projects. And I think we need to probably elaborate on that, Steve, because I think we questioned that at the Wamri meeting. And I think what happened is there was tariff fees put back into nine projects. But what happened was those three districts waived their tariff fees. And that was Pine Ridge Village, Obalawa, and I think there was Wamri.
Yeah, it was us.
So those three were waived. So when it came to our district, Wakpamni, Chris asked us if we could do the same thing, so get the money back into the project. We took it back to our district, district said no, because it's an ordinance and we shouldn't waive our tariff fees. So our district said no to it. So we took it back and we told Chris. Chris was there that night. So our district never waived our tariff fees. There's other districts that did either. But at the same time, Steve, you need to kind of maybe elaborate on that. Those tariff fees are already put in there. So why aren't we going to give it back? If... Could you answer that?
Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, yes. The council did, originally the council passed an ordinance waiving the tariff fees for all nine buildings. Then it rescinded that and added to the budget based on the original cost estimate for the build, which I think was four point five million per building.
Yeah.
We all know that the cost of each building, the budget is now higher than four point five. And I think most of the budgets are around five point five. So, and I think what all the owners' representatives and contractors are telling you is that they are looking for every additional dollar that they can get to put back into the buildings. So that's, you are correct that the tariff fees were budgeted based on the original cost. And it is also correct that the owners' representatives are trying to get additional dollars to put back into those buildings. And to Mr. Steele's point, I think if a district like Wamri wants to put their tariff fees back into the buildings, I do think that this ordinance, this approach would provide that pathway or that example for Wamri or other districts to do that. So it's not a waiver of the fee, but it's a one-time dedication back to the same project so that the dollars can go back into these buildings.
I think that was what was initially said when the tariff fees were going to be waived at these construction projects, if I recall. And so to put it back into the project. But I think that some of us said no, districts said no. So how much tariff fees did we put into the nine multipurpose buildings? What was the total amount? You gave us a number at Wamri.
I'll have to pull that out. I think it's one point six two million across the nine districts. It might be a hundred and eighty thousand per district.
Okay. And I think that this thirty-three point three percent tariff proposal that came to us, what we did was we tabled that. So right now that is tabled. So we never approved the thirty point, thirty-three point three percent divided.
Sure, it's twenty-five.
So it's at the current rate, Steve, it's not at thirty-three. That's a proposed rate, but we didn't get to that yet to really sit down and agree to that. And I think that's going to probably come at a later time with Tarot Office. I think we're going to have a working session with Tarot, right James?
Nope.
And so we're going to talk about that. But right now, there's no approval of the three point three percent tariff. So it's still at that, the rate that it is, the current rate. But so with a hundred and eighty thousand per nine districts, we've got that for Tarot. Why are we going to not waive the tariff fee, but use that tariff fee? Is it going to come out of this one eighty and put back into their project?
They'll do what's paid in.
Yeah, that's what I want to know. Is that what you're looking at? We already gave tariff fees to it, so are you going to take, are they going to take the one eighty and put it back into the project? They're not going to waive their tariff fee, but they're going to put that one eighty back into the project? Is that what you're saying, do you say yes or no?
What this, yes, I think the shortest answer is yes. The revenue would be paid into the tribe and the tribe by this ordinance would dedicate it back to that building. And this is just responding to the request of the tribal district itself. And the committee recognized, I guess, the desire of the district and put this forward. The only change is instead of waiving the fee, this would be to dedicate the revenue from the fee to the building itself, which is in essence the same result, meaning that the money goes to the building itself. So, and I think it's based on what the district itself wanted to do. But of course, it is council's decision, but that's what it is.
Okay, and so my second part of my question today is, we just talked earlier about, I think Councilman Dillon made a motion in one of our council meetings that we bring in to start looking at all nine projects with basically like an audit. Of where we're at financially with every project. And now, if we do this, is that going to hurt that? I just need to hear from the attorney. Because I think we're not construction, but we've got to get legal to ask to tell us that. So, you know, right now, I guess I'm just kind of trying to think if this would hurt. Because we're going to ask for, he said an audit to be looked at all nine districts to see, because some districts are not really up with their buildings yet.
Right. And obviously, the deadline for expenditure of all arcapunks is the end of 2026, so December thirty-one, 2026. And all of the buildings, all of the expenditures have to be complete by that time. I don't know that this would impact your ability to do an audit. It would just, you know, the contracts, and for Porcupine in particular, the contract is in place. The work is ongoing. The contract does provide for payment of the tariff fee. That will actually stay the same. But by this ordinance, if the council adopts it, you would dedicate the revenue back to the project. So that for that project, they would have that additional bit of revenue to put into the building. And that could include, you know, necessary fixtures or equipment or other costs. Each of the projects has had some unanticipated issue. And so this provides that additional revenue for the project. I don't think it will affect your audit of the Porcupine building. Or if another district wants to follow this approach, it wouldn't affect your audit of the other district. But again, it is a policy decision for the council about whether you want to dedicate the tariff revenue back to the building or if you want to use the tariff revenue for a different purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Constable, standing soldier.
It seems simpler if we just send a porcupine or slice of a pie and then they put it back from where they choose to put it. I mean, we can circumvent this whole situation. Send a hundred and ninety thousand dollar check out to Porcupine and if they see fit to put it in their building, let them put it in their building. Why ask council to do it?
If they're not doing that much.
Mr. Standing Soldier, I think this just guarantees that result. It specifically dedicates the revenue to the project. It may actually achieve the same result you're talking about. But it would make sure that the revenue was dedicated. And what we're being told by the district request is coming from the district and from the project team, which is the owner's representative working with the district, that they had some unique issues and they do require additional revenue. And you know that they came to the council last session with a plan to pursue New Markets Tax Credits, but this is another way of dedicating some revenue for that particular project. And again, if another district wanted to do the same thing, this would be the recommended approach.
Constable Greenwald.
I was just going to mention some of the stuff somebody already mentioned, so I'm not talking about it. Right now, we've got districts that are unhappy with what they're seeing in their buildings right now. So you could say, I'm going to use it for this, but by the time it gets sent over to them, it seems like it just disappears. You don't really see the money that Pine Ridge should have took aside and we want it to use for this or not. All of our guys are sitting there like, what the hell is this building? What kind of building are we getting here? So, I mean, we could say it's used for this or that. But it goes into the block hole and whatever the change orders they come up with and it just disappears. You still get stuck with that same old shell of a building that you're going to get. That's why we got this investigation that we wanted to, that you guys wanted to have done and I'm on board if you're on this. It's frustrating because it seems like every time we build something, it gets changed and changed and changed and changed. We're talking about the new childcare building much more than that cost than the original structure that they want. But I just wanted to mention that. Either way, I mean, it's, we're going to end up with the same situation. We're going to figure out why we got the buildings we're doing and it doesn't make sense.
Counselor Steele.
For Lawrence's question, you know, the reason why he needs this ordinance is because with this ordinance, it gets to full one ninety thousand. Without it, their district's only going to get like fifty-two hundred from Tarot. And if you look at, like Rich mentioned, every building, it don't look like it's really that much, but somehow we're spending a lot of money on it. Our buildings don't even have one pole up yet, not one pole, everything's laid on the ground. And I get texts from the lady who's supposed to be our owner there, asking if we want to cut costs in some areas to save money to put here and there. And then it just concerns me because are we paying for their mess up? Because their engineer messed up on the concrete pour and the designs where it didn't match up. And she assured us that they were going to take responsibility and cover those costs. But it still worries me that, like you know what Rich says, we're finding additional dollars and we don't know if they're exactly going back to where we need them to. But being that these are our only opportunity to get a building, I think we just support the districts however they want to do it. So, that, Mr. Chair, I'll second his motion.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Constable Hunter, second my Constable Steele. Pardon vote?
Question real quick.
No more.
I have a question. So how fair is that to the rest of us, our districts, when we were given four point five million dollars to, part of it was to construct our buildings? So when this audit comes back, then what is it going to show? That you guys spent four point five or more than four point five?
Well, you heard Steve, you heard Steve and Sonny, how fair is it that other districts make their fee?
Wait, hold on, I'm talking.
We're not asking to waive their fee.
It doesn't matter. You didn't waive your fee, but you're utilizing the tariff, which should go back, really actually shouldn't be waived. And that's why I'm saying, is it going to cost Wakpamni District four point five million to construct? The only thing that was coming forward was the extension, that our buildings will get done in end of July. That was the only thing. Didn't cost money, just saying we're going to get it done. But now, you've got Day Creek District, Pass Creek and Eagle Nest. Did theirs come back at a four point five million? Are they going to come out about not that much when, once they're done? And us too, Wakpamni, all the rest of the districts that are not doing this? Because now, what they're saying is that they're running low on money. It concerns me because we had the comptroller giving us a breakdown of all what was left in the projects, each district. And she said the ones with most money in each of those line items is because they're not, we still got money. Nothing is moving in that project. The ones that have less money is ones that are getting done, getting complete. So that, you know, I'm just kind of thinking here about, why are we going to spend more on one project? And my district has to stick within that four point five? Those are my questions and I'm concerned. If this passes, then that's going to open up for the rest of the districts to say, well, we want to save me.
And that is available, that would be available.
I'm just saying, that's why we asked for an audit of the projects.
I'm going to call upon order here. Could you guys not all talk at once here and wait for the president to call on you? If the president will call on you, then you could talk, because otherwise you're going to start both talking at once or anything. You know how that goes.
My latest debate was, I think there's a motion on the floor, Chair.
Well, if you didn't debate, you should get the floor, but not all talk at once.
Autodiscipline.
Okay, we're going to run this motion, right? It's just getting out of... Secretary.
How come we never get rebuttal? You always do that to us.
We had plenty of time.
You allow people to do that, but it's under us.
Questions here, so, Secretary, we just need to move on.
Well, when you put misinformation out there, that's how this stuff looks like this.
For clarification on this ordinance, I received one from Steve Gunn. And the one that Jeremy read has a different title and a whereas than that therefore be ordained. So we use the one that Steve Gunn has sent to us.
Yes, that is the amended one, the latest one that I emailed to space, that's the one that I...
So can I read those plotters for the record?
Yes, please read.
So the new title would be Ordinance of the Laws to Tribal Council, the Laws to Tribal Dedicating the Laws to Tribal Employment Rights Fees for the Planning and Construction of the Government Service Building in the Porcupine District to the Building Project. And then there's a new whereas, the fourth whereas, instead of waiving the tariff fees, the Tribal Council enacts this ordinance to dedicate the tariff revenue to the building project for the Government Service Building in Porcupine District. Now therefore be ordained in order to maximize the funds available for construction of the Government Service Building in the Porcupine District. The Tribal Council hereby dedicates all tribal employment rights fees collected under the Tribal Employment Rights Ordinance, Ordinance Number Zero One Dash Two, as amended for all services and work performed in connection with the planning, design and construction of the Government Service Building in Porcupine District to the District Government Service Building Project.
Motion, motion.
The title of the year, I think it's twenty-four, twenty-five. I've got the new one that you just read in the back. Oh, the certification. Oh yeah, go to the back.
Pardon vote?
David Kelly.
No.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yeah, no.
Was that a yes or no?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Jimmer Jr. Bullet of White Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior.
This was a tough one because it proved ours when we did it. So in all fairness, I'm going to go yes this one time, because they voted yes when Pine Ridge came to them.
Jeremy Rosales.
No.
Lyle Weston.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehop Weston.
Yeah, no.
Garfield Steele.
Yep.
James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
No.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Eight yes, seven no.
Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel. On behalf of Porcupine District, thank you.
Okay, going on to the next one. Resolution of the Lawless Highway Council, the Lawless Tribe approved in the purchase by the Lawless Tribe Department of Transportation Motor Fuels Division of a mini excavator for the Lawless Tribe Public Works Stormwater Management Project. Whereas the Tribal Council approved the tribal, to approve the Lawless Tribe Public Works Stormwater Management Project, which involves installation of culverts under identified roads to divert stormwater away from the roads and prevent road flooding and washout. And the public works project also involves application of compressed fillow and gravel onto the road to help reduce the roads nearby protecting them from washout and deterioration caused by stormwater. And whereas the project will improve tribal members' access to public healthcare and bring some medical services, and will also provide workforce development, including on-the-job training for unemployed and under-employed tribal members. Whereas on December thirty-first, Wednesday four, the tribe entered an inter-agency agreement with the Lawless Tribe Department of Transportation Motor Fuels Division to manage and oversee all aspects of the project and provide project management services, construction services, and hauling services to carry out and complete the project. Whereas Department of Transportation Motor Fuels Division requires certain equipment in order to complete the project. Whereas on October tenth, twenty twenty-five, the Economic and Business Development Committee of the Tribal Council approved a motion to approve the acquisition by the Department of Transportation and Motor Fuels Division of a mini excavator from general equipment in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-one cents pursuant to the inter-agency agreement for the project. As such, equipment is necessary for completion of the garage yard. Purchasing is more cost-effective than leasing and applicable procurement procedures have been followed and to refer to the executive committee. Now therefore be resolved that the executive committee of the Lawless Tribe hereby approves the acquisition, I should be counsel.
Yeah, yeah.
Approves the acquisition by the Department of Transportation Motor Fuels Division of a mini excavator from general equipment in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-one cents pursuant to the inter-agency agreement of the Lawless Tribe Public Works Stormwater Management Project. For the reasons set up here in certification, motion.
Motion my Constable Rosales, second my Constable Cross. Roll call.
Question, Chair.
Go ahead.
You know, at the very beginning of this entire project, when we rolled in roughly about a year ago, we, I fought pretty hard to get the remaining money over to the Motor Fuels Program. And I don't know exactly where that money is sitting at right now, but I'm also reviewing the minutes. And they're doing a lot of purchases for, to finish these projects and I don't even know how far along they are. On ten-ten, you know, they spent seventy-two thousand. On ten-ten again, another seventy-two. Ten-ten, sixty-six and a half. Then on ten-ten again, another ten thousand, almost eleven. Then they got one for fifty-one thousand. Then another one at fifty-one thousand. Then two hundred and twenty-five thousand. You know, I'm just questioning what's being done on the project itself, because these tools, you know, and new equipment add up significantly. And I feel that people aren't getting the resource, you know, that they're entitled to. You know, I believe every district had five projects they were supposed to do and I don't even know where they're at. So can somebody kind of explain that? Thank you.
Go ahead, Constable Ross.
The last update we had was at a road task force meeting, it was last Thursday. I did ask for Mr. LeWoe to bring forward a report to the Next Technology Business Development Union. And he did bring the report, I think it was the one prior to that. So, yeah, the information is available. I strongly encourage that anybody who has any reports can come to any of the meet road task force or the Economic Development Union, as I did request a report from Mr. LeWoe.
Constable Cross.
We've been assigned to this road task force and we've been consistent with it. I don't want to open to the task force, but to the council, I think you all invited to come to these meetings. This is not, I know that timing of it is kind of bad because it's on the same day as Finance Committee. I think most of you sit on Finance, I'd rather prefer to sit on Finance and then go to the task force meeting. But I know it's sometimes to get council reps out there, get the reports from Dottie and Finance. There's some red flags pertaining to spending or not spending, but the whole goal is to try and get that money spent before twenty twenty-six. So far, we've been, so far, we've been given the good report on projects. I know it's not satisfying to most of us and I know they're trying to address those five roads that were selected by the districts. And I think it's moving along with work to them and sometimes it seems like it's a snail pace. The whole idea is to try to make sure that this task force is keeping on track with them to make sure that this money is being spent. And so I know there's some purchases that he was wanting to purchase, but just for this stormwater project only. that, that he was wanting to purchase, but just for this stormwater project only. And so that's, that's just kind of a brief report, but I think, I think you want them to come to the task force meeting, to address those concerns, and so, Mr. Resilience, I was talking to the committee, and they want our full report, and I think we can have Mr. LeWoe come here and talk to the committee, and have to deal with those reports, without doubt. I don't know who most of you can hear, but just run it through.
Secretary, roll call.
Jeremy, Mr. Rosales, in the last, therefore, in the last whereas clause, I would like the sentence and to refer to the Executive Committee stricken because...
Yes, I see this.
Okay, so I'll remove that from that. Thank you.
David Kelly?
Yeah, sure.
Blaine Little Thunder? Tyler Lunderman? George Dreamer Jr.? Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Garfield Still?
Yep.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Thirteen yes, two not voted, motion carries.
Thank you, Council. For Tyler Lunderman, let's hear it, ordinance of the oldest tribe, Tribal Council of the oldest tribe to rescind hiring fees and other management policies for the Prairie Casino, in ordinance number twenty-five, I don't know if you don't have it. It's not a resolution. I think you have to put it at the resolution, twenty-five, thirty-two. Speaking of the fourth whereas, whereas on August twenty-fifth, or August... When was it?
Twenty-seventh, sir.
August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, Tribal Council adopted ordinance number twenty-five, thirty-two, which provided that until further notice from the Tribal Council, the dinner manager, the Prairie Casino shall not hire any employees at the casino or approve overtime work for any employee other than the casino. Whereas, where number twenty-five, twenty-two provided that there shall be no salary employees at Prairie Casino, and all employees must perform their work at the casino property, and they must use the casino time clock to record their hours of work. Whereas on November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, Economic and Business Development Committee of the oldest tribal council recommended rescinding all previous action concerning the management plan at the Prairie Casino. Now therefore be ordained that the oldest tribal council hereby rescines ordinance number twenty-five, thirty-two, which opposed hiring employees and other employees policy at the Prairie Casino, certification, motion.
Motion by Councilman Rosales. Second by Councilman Weston. Roll call.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Not voting.
George Dreamer Jr.? Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior? Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Garfield Still?
Not voting.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Thirteen yes, four not voted, motion carries.
That's it for me, we need, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to next agenda, I have education, this time I turn it over to the Chair.
Um, now, how about, resolution for this thing here. Yeah. I got it, I got it. And then, um, now if you get, you get a hold of Angela, she has a pen out for her, so there she comes, you can pass out copies, Angela. So, residents of the oldest tribal council, oldest tribe affirming the suspension of American Horse School Board and appointing the wisdom keeper John Haas, Robert Kukro, and Dr. Richard Arantad as an interim school board for American Horse. Skipping down to the fourth, whereas the American Horse School is a tribally-controlled school of the oldest tribe providing educational services for students in grades kindergarten through eighth grade, and whereas the American Horse School operates with a five-member school board who are responsible for policy development and implementation and horse drive operations, management, and administration of school activities in accordance with tribal state and federal laws. And whereas, at a duly-held education committee meeting, by motion and vote, suspended the American Horse School Board until further notice and recommends appointing an interim school board until the matter is resolved. And whereas, there are questions regarding American Horse School Board expenditures, and the oldest education committee has determined that a financial review needs to be conducted, and that the American Horse School Board should be suspended until further notice, and that interim school should put, be put in place until a financial review is completed, and recommends the appointment of John Haas, Robert Kukro, and Dr. Richard Arantad of the wisdom keepers and interim school board for American Horse School until the matter is resolved. Now therefore be resolved that the oldest tribal council does hereby affirm, affirm the suspension of the current American Horse School Board until further notice and appoints John Haas, Robert Kukro, and Dr. Richard Arantad as an interim school board for American Horse School until the matter is resolved. And be it further resolved, the oldest tribal education program is directed to have the financial review conducted within forty-five days of the written report, while finding provided to the tribal council. So Chair, this was on the agenda last month, end of October, and because we didn't get it finished or get to it, in that time, that forty-five days was up, according to this ordinance. So, education committee met, um, two, two Mondays ago, and they, they, they extended that suspension for sixty days. And within that time, from our last education meeting two weeks ago till yesterday, we received a porch, a report from tribal head, and that's, that's what was passed out. They're supposed to be passed out at education yesterday, but we couldn't make, we didn't have, we couldn't have, we didn't have forums, so this is, that was passed out today. I think, if we need executive, we can do that, Chair.
I think we should, huh?
Major?
Yeah, let's, let's go on to executive. Motion, go on to executive. Motion by Councilman Rosales. Second by Councilman Chuck Middel. Call for a vote?
David Kelly?
No.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Good.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yeah.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Garfield Still?
No.
James Cross?
No.
Craig Dillon?
No.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
No.
Nineteen yes, six no, motion carries. Go ahead, executive, two fifty-six. Shut it down, y'all.
Go real food, huh, dogs? He can have this room asleep. Go real food, dogs.
Okay, so you just read the vote? So I need a motion. We have a motion.
What is the resolution?
To restart.
To suspend another forty-four days. Motion.
Okay, so we have a motion. Go ahead.
Second. I don't see no real warriors in here.
Second.
I'll second.
See no real warriors in there, that's funny.
Second. Call for the vote.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior. Jeremy Rosales. Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumpin Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Garfield Steele.
Yeah.
James Cross.
Oh.
Craig Dillon.
Not voting.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Seven, yes, one, no, three not voting, motion carried. Was that it, education?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, moving on. I see no agenda items for finance, so we can move on to HHS.
All right. Resolution of the... Resolution of the Oglewood Tribe Council, Oglewood Tribe, from the family surname change of Sierra back to Sierra due to the section... Due to section sixteen point two, point one zero three of the enrollment ordinance. Skipping sovereignty clause of section sixteen and article four down to the fourth. Whereas pursuant to us to HHS number eighteen dot zero three, enrollment code article six, section sixteen point six, point one zero three provides a process for enrollment directives to correct routine errors. And whereas by motion of one on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, the West State House, the Human Services Committee approved the request and recommended that the enrollment director fix the last name error and change the surname of Sierra back to its correct spelling of Sierra. Now therefore be resolved, Oglewood Tribe Council does hereby approve the family surname change of Sierra back to Sierra due to section sixteen point two, point one zero three of the enrollment ordinance. Motion to approve.
Most break up, councilor general vote.
Second.
Go ahead.
You know, this Sierra name comes from my grandma and also her grandpa, my grandson. You know, she gave my granddaughter through this Sierra last name. And I know that we had gotten comments from our family. We have a Sierra standing there, he's coming from the same bloodline. My grandson standing right there. And the Sierras, our Sierras came from those two, two grandfathers. And I just wanted to share that in the enrollment records, it does have the last name as Sierra. But my grandma was Ilaria Sierra. And my other grandmother was Antonia. Then I had my Grandpa Ben, which he comes from that line. And Grandpa Joe, which he comes from. So I have to speak out on that because, you know, I think I got asked earlier that my cousin, which is my grandfather, said we need to keep that the way it is in the enrollment records, which is Sierra. And I think, did you talk to your grandfather about that?
I did, and I don't have the information to do.
Okay, so I think that was something that was brought to my attention. So she is my granddaughter through that Sierra, Sierra bloodline, but I always know that today it's south away, it is today Sierra, which they use the last name Sierra rather than the Sierra part of it. But our grandfather, great grandfather, my grandmother's father was not a enrolled member of the tribe. He was a Mexican. And we have history on him too that goes back. There's no, we have no enrollment records of him here at the tribal enrollment office. Just your grandmother and grandfathers. So I just wanted to share that because he said we need to, I was told we need to keep it like that in the enrollment records. But I understand where they're coming from. Because today they don't go by Sierra, they go by Sierra, right? So I think that's why they want it changed in the records of the enrollment office, which is understandable. But I just have to share that because I come from that same bloodline also. My grandmother is also a Sierra. So again, just to say that, I just wanted to share that. But I second Ryan's motion to give that change in the enrollment office. And hopefully, the rest of my family will understand why that had to be changed that way. And I know that my cousin expressed that, this Taffy, we know him as Taffy, Sierra. But again, I just have to share that. And I've never seen anything like that come forward on a family that wanted to change those names like that. But I know way back, the enrollment office has kind of made typos, not the enrollment office, but the BIA. And so some names have not been correctly typed their last name. So I know that those things like that, that we can research back and say that this was how it was written. But I just wanted to share that with the president. Thank you.
I give her that history. Secretary, call for the vote.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumpin Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Garfield Steele.
Yeah.
James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Fourteen, yes, one not voting, motion carried.
No.
Just a quick one, Sonia. Sierra means I saw. And Sierra means the saw or mountain range. Depends on which way you want to use it in Spanish.
Our grandpa was Spanish. So we found about history on him coming from the cavalry during the, or during, yeah, yeah. But he was actually like a cook. And then they married, and they had these three, or four, the two sons and the two daughters. And that's how these guys all branched out. How we all come from that bloodline, on that. But that's how, my dad would obviously too, that my grandma's last name was Sierra. But actually, I'll say it was Sierra. Today they use Sierra. But in the enrollment records, they have Sierra. That's how they go. So that was my granddaughter, too, I told you. I'm going to say something, just really quick. The whole reason that had to come to you is because we don't have the enrollment committee set up. The policies say that the enrollment committee can make name changes, do corrections, and there's a form and a process. But we haven't been able to get the enrollment committee up and running because they don't have the budget to get a committee going. So that's why they have came here. The other issue is, in that process, you can only change your own name. You can't go change names of everybody that didn't apply for that change. But this is the way it turned out because we don't have an enrollment committee to kind of monitor that and follow the policy. And why I... So hopefully the enrollment office will maybe make that change with this action when it goes to them. And I think the reason why the enrollment office has no enrollment committee was to kind of take that out. They took out the committee and grabbed the enrollment director, the one that was able to do all the enrollments. So she's the one that does all of the enrollments. We don't have an enrollment committee. So I think somewhere down the road, you have to think about that because of situations like this.
Sonia, was there anyone named, the other name?
Which one's the?
Did anyone carry any other names?
Sierra. Sierra, I don't know if they actually used that. I think it might have been like our grandma, like her grandfather, they might have carried that Sierra. Did you find out anything on that? Amber?
The only thing that I found out about the Sierra last name was that it was given to us during the Dawes Act time and land was given to our grandma Mary. And so the last name Sierra was misinterpreted. And all the research that I've done, and even paperwork I've gotten from my Grandpa Taffy, show the Sierra last name was even created in the Dawes Act. So unfortunately, you know, we never carried the Sierra name. It was given to us by the BIA.
See, that's why that BIA couldn't have made that typo and put Sierra instead of Sierra. Sierra, so that's why they all go Sierra, right, we started with Sierra.
The tribal ID goes Sierra, but my state ID is Sierra. Social security is Sierra, everything is Sierra.
So that's what they run into when they give their tribal IDs.
When we have to apply for stuff, we have to identify which is our real last name.
Yeah.
So we all just go with Sierra.
Yeah. So that's where we come from at the time. But yeah. And your birth certificate, you have to show your birth certificate, right, it says Sierra?
Says Sierra.
Yeah. Yeah.
I seen Amber when Sonia looked at Amber and said, "That's my right to," and Amber kind of changed. I don't know. I don't know. No, I'm just teasing. I'm just teasing, she didn't.
All right. History is very important, knowing your history.
I'm just teasing. Sonia, I'm just teasing, she didn't do that.
Okay.
Resolution of the Tribal Council of Oglewood Tribe to approve the Oglewood Tribe Home Improvement Program, twenty twenty-five annual plan in the amount of six hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Skipping to the fourth, whereas the Oglewood Tribe, House and Human Services Committee met on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five and approved the twenty twenty-five annual plan for Oglewood Tribe hip program in the amount of six hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars to provide financial assistance to Albo Oglewood Tribe tribal homeowners selected by the hip program. Now whereas the twenty twenty-five annual plan will include category one new construction home for the found individuals, Anna White Blue, Colette Reddow, and Marilyn White. Now whereas the following amendments were made by the hip director and approved by committee due to the death of... Can I see it? Is that her? Is that?
I think so.
Okay. Due to the death of G. Fred Rivera, the replacement will be Marilyn White and C. Steele, who was selected in twenty twenty-three, and his replacement will be Colette Reddow. Red Powell. Now therefore be resolved that the Oglewood Tribal Council through the twenty twenty-five annual plan for the Oglewood Tribe hip program in the amount of six hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars to provide financial assistance to the Albo Oglewood tribal members selected by the hip program. And be it further resolved that the Oglewood Tribe President or Vice President is hereby authorized to execute any necessary documents related to the hip... Could that say twenty twenty-five?
No.
No, twenty twenty-four. Okay. Twenty twenty-four annual plan, motion to approve.
Most for the council, chief of evil. Second by Councilman. Oco.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man. Richard Greenwall Senior. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumpin Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Garfield Steele.
Yeah.
James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Not voting.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Fourteen, yes, three not voting, motion carried. Was that it? Chair.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, I see the agenda items for the Land Committee. Moving on to Law and Order, it's time I'll turn it over to the chair.
Thank you, Chairman. Law and Order Committee has four items. Item number one, ordinance of the Oglewood Tribe of Oglewood Tribe adopting the twenty twenty-five revised OST election code. Skipping down to the fourth, whereas, whereas in the exercise of these authorities, the Tribal Council does adopt the Oglewood Tribe election code to establish a uniform and comprehensive election process that is fair, impartial, and dignified for the election of members of the Tribal Council boards and district government officials. And whereas the Law and Order Committee of the Tribal Council approved changes to the twenty twenty-two OST election code and voted, submit to the Tribal Council for approval and adoption. Whereas the Tribal Council concurs with the changes proposed by the Law and Order Committee. Now therefore be it ordained that the Oglewood Tribe of Oglewood Tribe hereby adopted the twenty twenty-five OST election code, which is attached heretofore and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth herein with revisions and bold. And be it further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect immediately and shall supersede, repeal, and replace all prior inconsistent laws of the Oglewood Tribe, including ordinance number twenty-two dash forty-two. And be it further ordained, the President of the Oglewood Tribe, or in his absence, the Vice President of the Oglewood Tribe, is directed to sign this ordinance. Certification, motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Weston, seconded by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Off the vote.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumpin Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Garfield Steele.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Fourteen, yes, one not voting, motion carried.
Try another question?
Go ahead.
So, in the code, it tells how much days prior to the election we have to have the commission in place. Did we determine that yet? If we're...
Yes, I do believe it's in there.
No, but I thought we didn't determine yet if we were going to bid out for whatever.
Oh, oh, yes, that one, we're going to bring it back to Law and Order, so we'll be able to send it off for the advertisement.
Okay. Secondly, you know, this is never done. And I don't think districts know that in the election year of January thirty-first, they have to do the reapportionment to determine how much council each district gets. So, you know, I want to make a motion that we have all the districts submit a census to determine how much councils each district's giving for the upcoming twenty-six, twenty-eight term. I'm making a motion before January thirty-first.
Thirty-first?
Yep.
I'll say it.
So to give a updated census?
No.
Back to what, to the...
To the, either the secretary or whatever it says in the code, but it says they have to know. January thirty-first of the election year to do the reapportionment.
Whatever's set in the election code.
Yep.
That's pretty much what they're supposed to do anyway.
I don't know, someone might get extra councils. I don't know.
I think he does, I don't know. I think Pinerz might pick up one more, too.
So we got a motion by Councilman Steele, second. Councilman Lunderman. Oco.
David Kelly.
Sure, yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumpin Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Garfield Steele.
Yeah.
James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
No.
Troy Little.
No, you're the loser.
I seen it with long eyes, man.
Fourteen, yes, one not voting, motion carried.
Okay, second item, we have a resolution of the Oglewood Tribe of Oglewood Tribe approving the change order number one for Albe Construction and Repair LLC in the amount of two hundred and three thousand, four hundred and one and sixty cents for the increased work on the OST Emergency Youth Shelter. Skipping down to the fourth, whereas, whereas the Oglewood Tribe entered into a contract with Albe Construction and Repair LLC for construction and repair services for the OST Victim Services Program for work on the Domestic Violence Shelter, the Victim Service Office, and the Emergency Youth Shelter. And whereas, upon further assessment of the OST Emergency Youth Shelter building, it has been determined that the significant repair work is needed for the safe and continued operation of the program in that building. And whereas, time is of the essence due to the upcoming funding deadline, the change in the weather conditions and funding are available to cover the change order. And whereas, the OST, the Law and Order Committee has reviewed the needs of the program and the proposed order change and recommends the approval by the Tribal Council. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglewood Tribe of Oglewood Tribe does hereby approve the change order number one for Albe Construction and Repair LLC in the amount of two hundred and three thousand, four hundred and one and sixty cents for increased work on OST Emergency Youth Shelter as attached and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth herein. And be it further resolved that the Tribal Chair is authorized to sign the change order in accordance with chapter thirteen of the OST Procurement Manual. Certification, motion.
Motion by Councilman Weston. Second?
Okay, seconded by Councilman Little Thunder.
Oco.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Sr.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Garfield Steele.
Yes.
James Cross. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
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 Welcome back. Fourteen, yes, one not voting, motion carried.
Okay, item number three, resolution of the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council authorizing the Ogallawasoo Tribe Department of Public Safety to apply for the Bureau of Indian Affairs Indian Highway Safety Law Enforcement LE grant for fiscal year 2026. Skipping down to the fourth, whereas, whereas the Chief of Police and new staff have proposed to apply for the Bureau of Indian Affairs Indian Highway Safety Law Enforcement LE grant in the amount of $1,447,585 with no match. And whereas, this grant will improve the safety of all residents and visitors of the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation by enforcing motor vehicle laws and while adding specific staff for this purpose. And whereas, the OST Public Safety believes the highway safety program is essential and integral part of its law enforcement operations. And whereas, the OST Department of Public Safety has successfully implemented and utilized this grant in past years and firmly believes that this grant will help the OST Department of Public Safety to further its mission and protect the people of the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And whereas, the OST Law and Order Committee has reviewed this matter and recommends approval by the Tribal Council. Now therefore be it resolved, the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council does hereby authorize the Ogallawasoo Tribe Department of Public Safety to apply for the grant, for the Bureau of Indian Affairs Indian Highway Safety Law Enforcement LE grant for the fiscal year 2026. Certification, motion.
Motion by Councilman Weston, seconded by Councilman Little Hunter.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.
Yes.
Bull Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Sr.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Sr.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Garfield Steele. James Cross. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Fifteen, you have this, motion carried.
Item number four, the resolution of the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council authorizing the purchase of 10 M500 body in-car camera units for the Ogallawasoo Tribal Department of Public Safety. Now skipping down to the fourth, whereas, whereas the OST Department of Public Safety is the tribe's law enforcement agency responsible for patrolling the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation and enforcing the laws of the tribe. And whereas, the Ogallawasoo Tribe Department of Public Safety is in need of 10 M500 body in-car camera systems for the new fleet. Whereas, the OST DPS has the bid up, the purchase for the new, for 10 new M500 body in-car camera units from Motorola Solutions. And whereas, the OST DPS has an ARPA fund available to make the purchase for 10 body in-car camera units. And whereas, the OST Law and Order Committee has reviewed this matter and recommends for approval of the bid selection and authorize the purchase as stated above. Now therefore be it resolved, the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council does hereby approve and authorize the purchase of 10 new M500 body in-car camera units from Motorola Solutions in the amount of $83,802, utilizing the OST DPS ARPA funds. And, sorry. Be it further resolved that if the President, or in his absence, the Vice President, is authorized to sign any documents necessary to effectuate this action. Certification, motion.
Motion by Councilman Weston.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Little Hawk Weston. Oco.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.
Yes.
Bull Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Sr.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Sr.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Garfield Steele.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Fifteen, you have this, motion carried.
I just want to say thank you to Council for approving the election code. Man, that was tough, we're getting through, opening up.
Okay. You, through the various committees, I don't see any agenda items. President's office, I did pass out all the, pass out the President's report.
I'm gonna make a motion to include the President's report.
Okay, motion by Councilman Little Hawk Weston, seconded by Councilman Junior.
Question?
Question?
Yeah. Question, so Chair, I know last council meeting, you brought letters pulling out of NCAI and, cool. I, you know, and the Council did approve those letters of withdrawal from the tribe. You know, there's been a lot of talk, a lot of Facebook, this and that during NCAI. You went over there. What was the reasoning for you went over there when we pulled out? I know that there's been a lot of talk and what can you say to the Council, what the reason was why you went there after we pulled out? And to my knowledge, you took your whole staff? And did you pay, did you pay the registration fee to go?
Yes, I did, and I did go to NCAI to hand deliver to the chairs of these committees. And I did hand deliver personally to the chair of Coalition of Large Tribes and the President of NCAI during the Great Plains Caucus. The other reasons why I went there was to get information from other tribes, large treaty tribes, and to speak with them. A lot of the issues that go on within that organization. And I'm happy to report that just about everybody I met with was in support. And they thought it was, it was good that the Ogallawasoo Tribe stood up and noticed and took a stand on this organization because I do believe they lost focus on what the purpose of it. Because of large land-based tribes, we kind of lost our voice over there. The voting system is set up, it is unfair. And those are some of the reasons why we pulled out. I think to Council for best support, we did make the strong statement. We stood by it and we received nothing but good compliments from it. But the work isn't done. The work isn't done, we still need to meet with NCAI board down the road when they want to talk about the fairness that goes on within federally recognized treaty tribes and state tribes. If you go to these conventions they have, you'll start to notice the difference. And one thing I noticed is, there is about, I don't know how many Alaskan people they drove, they bust in or... They made their way down there just for elections, elections was going on. President Mark Makarow got back into office. And he is a small tribe, a casino tribe. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that go on there that really, we don't have a voice there. So, I believe we made a strong stance, I stand behind it, the decision we made. Also, when I left, when I was leaving, I was approached by two of the NCAI board members asking how, or what can they do to get the Ogallawasoo Tribe back at the table. So, those are some of the things that happened there. I thought it turned out pretty beneficial to us while we were there. Of course, there's always going to be kickback in everything you do. But sometimes you have to take those steps in order to make a point, and I think we made an outstanding point by standing up for large treaty tribes because they did not support us. We didn't take a position when, I was gonna say it, the Lummi tribe issue was on the table. How come there wasn't a position taken on behalf of large land-based treaty tribes, federally recognized treaty tribes? When that issue was on the table, because it does affect us. Councilman Kelly?
You know, if I could add just a little bit to the conversation because I do have friends over a lifetime that go to NCAI, but the action that was taken by this tribe has forced their hand. And before they ended week at that meeting at the NCAI, I know convention 2025, I've already received emails that they're already working on creating a large land-based tribe task force. And they drafted descriptions and guidance, purpose and mission, composition, membership. So, the action that this tribe took is setting precedents. They are now taking us serious. So, it is happening, thank you, Chairman.
Yes, thank you.
Last question.
You gotta think yourselves, too, because we don't get this together. Go ahead, Council.
So, from your perspective or your knowledge, what's the feeling from our sister tribes here in South Dakota? I mean, because, I don't, I mean, I got a call from one councilman in Rosewood who was questioning why we were. But what's your feeling or what are they telling you or...
Well, I haven't met with any of the tribes under the Chairman LaBonne, Chairman Renville. Of course, Chairman Renville is the chairman of COLT, Coalition of Large Tribes. But I did tell him I had delivered a resolution statement that, no disrespect to tribal leaders, but we feel that this organization is going in the wrong direction. And we still talk. I don't think it's nothing against the tribal leaders. It's just that we feel different of how the organization's being ran or not, or the direction they're going.
Well, you know, it is directed to the tribal leaders because they're the ones leading. And so, that's why I was asking, because if we're just balking, are we going back to the table? Because the statement that we put out, I hope it's just not a statement of saying the Ogallawasoo don't want a part of this or whatever, and then jumped back in the bed. You know, I think the statement we made is that, you know, we can do this on our own. Because the way they were, and you said yourself, it wasn't in the best interest of our tribe. And being that, you know, we're leaders, we're not followers, we took that stand, so I hope we stand firm on it.
Yes, yes, I definitely agree with you. And we need to take that stand, and we did. We didn't just talk, we did. And that's one of the things we expressed while we were up there meeting with other large tribes. And if some of you look on their page, the President's page, that we met with at least 10 other tribal leaders, large land-based tribes. And they're all in agreement that we need to stand on our own. We need to say something, you know, some of the talks were about how come the organization did not take a stance when the Lummi tribe was being questioned at the SKEA, Senate Committee of Indian Affairs hearing. And one thing that I'm still upset is Senator Tillis from North Carolina is still holding our Woody Need Bill hostage. And one senator, that one senator is holding up our bill. And it went all the way through the Senate, there's a top, last, last one. Flying colors, nobody voting against it except that one senator. Why? Because he wants us to support the Lummi tribe. So, why, why, why is a tribe holding us hostage? Our Woody Need Bill hostage? And that's the next question I want to ask this Council. Is that we need to do something about that. We need to take a position on it and ask, find out why the Lummi are holding our bill hostage. We did talk with, I guess, the Chairman of the Lummi tribe. We did, me, myself, and Chairman LaBonne. We had a little pre-meeting with both of them. And we had no problem with them going through the process, just like everybody else. Why hold our bill up? We did nothing to you. Well, that's a question that's on the table. Go ahead.
Um, so, is that, has that changed after the [inaudible]?
As far as, as long as Senator Tillis is in there, he's the one holding it up. So, you know, we did have our congressional, you know, weigh in on this and see if they can talk to Senator Tillis. So, you know, we did have our congressional, you know, weigh in on this and see if they can talk to Senator Tillis. But, you know, we rolled into another administration and he's not let up. He's not led up. You know, we told that to grass grounds or some, maybe we should weigh in on this. But we've also found out Senator Tillis was leaving office up to just today. So he's saying, well, let it play out itself. Well, I don't think it's going to play out itself. We've been waiting this long. So what's the next step for us? Those are just some of the issues that we as large tribes, we need to make a point and let them know that, you know, we need business when we say we want to be represented in these organizations. Because as far as I'm concerned, they're using our tribe, our data. And a lot of these small tribes care, piggyback our data where they go lobby in DC. It's not right. It's not right when we bring our data to Washington and a small tribe comes in here and they say, well, that's just their tribe. Our tribe, we have the same problems. We know for a fact they don't need to come close to the needs that we have as large tribes. And that's the sad part of it is we don't have enough representation to sit on all these committees in Washington like some of these smaller tribes where they can afford lobbyists. So we're at a disadvantage and we need to change that. And I'm glad that we all agreed to go this route and we got to stay the course. We got to stand firm. We got to push it back on the man, the demands for large federally recognized large land-based treaty tribes. Okay, anything else? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, another issue that came out of finance that we passed a motion and it was requesting your office to do a letter to the delegates in Washington DC for the funding for our building in Woodinee, for that building. And today, the letter still hasn't been drafted. So I'm just going to make it a council action since it was a finance action. Pretty much the same thing. My motion would be to have your office draft a letter for the delegates in DC. And this will be coming from the tribal council through your office requesting the funding, the $600,000 funding for our building in Woodinee.
So let me answer that real quick. I have no problem with that. So we did ask, we pulled in, piqued and asked her, the funding is there. The funding is there. The shutdown is over. So hopefully something would change.
Well, I'm making a motion for the letter. And if we have to, then we'll go down there and take it to those offices ourselves. Because we really need this building done. So anyways, I'm an interesting, I'm motion Mr. Chair.
Okay. So your motion by Councilman Still? Second by Councilman Jopan Eagle? Was that, can you?
Yeah, it was your office to draft a letter for, to send to the DC delegates to request assistance to help us get that funding approved through the main office in Chalkair. They said it's in HHS building.
So it's HHS?
Yeah.
I think I had a motion to disapprove your report.
Oh, yes.
Yes, could you run that one first and then Garfield's motion after?
Yeah. I'm not approving your report.
Okay, is there any other questions on the president's report? And just for the record, I was glad to attend this session at NCAI. It was an honor to go up there and stand up for the Oglala Sioux tribe and take our position and stand strong. We got a lot of good comments out of it from other large treaty tribes and tribal leaders across the nation. So we got a lot of good support out there. And I was proud when I came back. So move it up. So we'll run this motion and then I still have some ladies here that are on my agenda.
And this is to approve the president's report. David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder. Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man. Richard Greenwell Sr. Jeremy Rosales. Laya Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jopan Eagle Sr. Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Garfield Steele. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dylan. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Fifteen unanimous motion carried. Okay, and then we have Councilman Steele's motion.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder. Tyler Londonman. George Dreamer Jr. Bo Little White Man. Richard Greenwell Sr. Jeremy Rosales. Laya Weston. Ryan Jopan Eagle Sr.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Garfield Steele. James Cross. Craig Dylan. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so fifteen yes, unanimous motion carried. Okay, so I have on my agenda, I have these ladies here, if they want to come out and speak, I'll give you a quick brief on what they're doing in the laundry of the president's office, what they're working on. Ladies, just push the button there. And generate this. One more time, has to be read. Come on Ed.
Come on Ed. You give us house, so we're going to give you.
Good evening, my name is Elaine Makota Mahajak. And tonight I am here to give a presentation about what our little organization did last year, what we plan to do and just give you an update because we did come to you guys last year for your support. Ochetti Shakoween, Powashde is a grassroots organization. And what we did last year was we went to alumni reservations to do voter registration. And we did what was called the Great Race to the Poles. Using the storyline of the great race around the Black Hills where the two-legged and the four-legged race for dominance. In our Great Race to the Poles, it was the nine tribes that were racing to the poles. And the winner, the tribe with the most votes from the election would have bragging rights to be called the Vegas Baddest, awesomeest tribe. And guess who won that? The Oglalas. We did. So congratulations, Oglala Sioux tribe. Charles Mix took second, Rosewood took third, and Shayander took fourth and Sandy Rock took fifth. And the smaller tribes didn't get in on the challenge. But we worked with a lot of organizations, other organizations who have the same goal. So I want to, I'm Oglala and my partners, I'm going to let them introduce themselves and the tribe that they're from and they can share something about. We're all kind of chipping, talking about different parts that we took part in.
Hi, I'm Angela Wobol, I'm Northern Indian, very familiar with Lake. Well, we go around the state, I stayed home and I participated in crew council. I tried to get to smaller groups, native groups that were doing the same thing as us to join us in this. While last year, it didn't work out, but this year it's working out and we've got it together.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank all you guys, you know, for allowing us to come and speak. You know, it's a great honor to be here speaking. My name is Andrew Sisnells and I'm a Southern U from southwestern Colorado. I've been wondering for 20 years what I'm doing here in South Dakota. I've been called, we have a mission to fulfill. And this is just part of it. And Frank, I'd like to thank you, you might not know this, but that national press release that you did for us, it affected other tribes throughout the United States. You got a call from, what, New York? New York, from a tribe, and I don't know what tribe it is. But right now, there's three ladies that are running throughout the United States. One of them is Deb Holland from New Mexico that is running for governor. The first Native woman that is running. We got another lady that's running from Minnesota that's running for senate. She is going to be the first Native woman that's running for senate. We have a lady that's running here for District 27, which is Heimridge. She hasn't announced yet. But she is reaching out to us to help her with the process. And just to share some of the numbers that took place in 2024 when we got involved in this. The numbers climbed up, 11,000 new registered voters. Dan Atmer just did a survey. The numbers that came out of the reservations was 6% to 10% increase. That's the effect that we had. And it's not just us, other groups joined us in this. And we did that in five weeks. Dan Atmer, the president of the Democratic Party, called me up and we were coming back from the road group. And he says, I don't know what you guys are doing, but keep doing what you're doing. And that came straight from him when he seen the numbers coming up. And these aren't our numbers, they're coming from the Secretary of State of the new registered voters that are coming up. So, you know, just to kind of recap on some of the stuff that we're doing. We're not just involved in voter registration. We're involved with our community, with the major communities. One of them is United Resilience Group Council, Turn South Dakota Purple, the Clean Water Alliance, the Environmental Protection Agency, the Democratic Party. And also, we're involved with a group called Voices. It's two young Lakota men. They got tired of the native violence that's taken place. So they formed a nonprofit organization, Healing with the Violence and the Addiction. And they're just getting it off the ground. And that's another group that I'm involved with. So it's not just about voter registration. We're involved in the community and what's happening in the community. We just came off of, we went up to Craven Canyon this last weekend. That's an awesome area. Some of you have been there, you know what I'm talking about. The thing that's happening in Craven Canyon, a lot of the vitegrass are becoming faded and weathered. We're going to have to do something about that. Because if we don't do something now, we'll be lost forever. So that's another thing that we're going to begin involved in is to preserve the vitegrass. So just a little bit of what we're about. And if you guys got any questions, just feel up to reach out to Frank or Alicia. So, okay. Thank you guys.
Okay, so our mission statement is to, Ochetti Shakoween Powashde works to amplify the voice of Native Americans in South Dakota by breaking through the cultural stigma of distrust and increased voter engagement. This grassroots organization seeks to build a bridge between years slash decades of not voting to being involved. Some of the goals that we have planned are to work with the tribes to enhance and conduct local on reservation voter registration and efforts, voter registration efforts and voter engagement, voter registration training, which includes absentee voting and mail-in voting instruction, and to build a bridge between voters and their candidates via forums to learn about local, regional, and state positions open. On December 6th, we have a voter engagement training at the White Room at the Rapid City Public Library. And that's open to anybody who's thinking of applying for office, state office. We are in touch with a couple candidates that are running for state, Secretary of State, and they just hired Davis. He wants to come to the reservation, he wants to meet the people. So he's reached out to us and he said, could you help me make that connection? So we would, you know, kind of like a liaison between the tribes and the people running for state office. We have our plan starting January. January, February, March, April, May, we want to get to all the tribes again. That'll give us time for people to get registered, you know, give them time to, it takes a while for them to get moving. What we did last year was something that was never done. When we were in lower rural, we had the relatives tell us, you know, thank you for doing this because this is what we need. We need somebody to light a fire under us. We've had a Vietnam veteran register to vote for the first time in his life. We've had people who never voted because they don't trust the government. And I was asked, why vote? I'm a parent who doesn't vote, why, tell me why I should vote? And I have grandchildren, I have grandchildren who rely on me. They look up to me, I'm their support. The decisions I make are going to affect them. So my answer to that person is if you have children, who's going to be their voice? And what we're planning to do this go around is to go to the colleges and the high schools and get our young people registered. We need our young people involved because this... We need our young people involved, because this, the future belongs to them. So we need to take them by the hand and say, "Come on, this is how you do it, you know? Get on, get on board with us, because we're all gonna be God one day, and it's them. They're the ones who are gonna have to do this work to sustain, to stay, you know, stay strong." And our sovereignty, after I read that, that big ugly bill, and, and I, the first thing I thought of was our sovereignty. My grandpa told me a story. He said, "The government's pushing us up a hill, and when we get to the top of that hill, it's a cliff." He said, "One day, we're gonna have to pay to live on our land," and we do, that time is now. If you, if you take a homesite lease for tribal land, we gotta pay. So, so those are some of the things that motivated me. You know, my Tepoja, I have a little four-year-old, green-eyed, Gigi hair, follows me all over. He, I'm, to me, maybe I'm his world, but he's my world too, you know, and he's my little partner in crime, but I do that, I, what I do for, what I do is for him, just like all of our, our Lakota children, all our young people. We have the things we have, we do now is going to affect them. So that's my motivation, you know, to, to get involved. But I too wanna thank President Starkumda for, um, acknowledging, you know, for letting us come and talk tonight, but also for, um, accepting the challenge. When we were in Rosebud registering voters, one of the security guards was listening to the radio, and I could hear tribal council, OST tribal council, in Rosebud. So every, the tribes do look to the Oglala's for leadership. They're watching us, they're waiting to see what the Oglala's are gonna do. And I really admire that our tribe is fierce, and, and we're not afraid, you know, we're that Pa Trunka, we're that bison, and we hit, hit that storm headfirst. And, um, that's what we need to instill in our children. So I'm excited, I'm excited to, to do this work. I'm, he's, like he said, like Andrew said, we were all called to do this. And funny thing, how we met, how our little group formed. Then her and I, it's like, "Hey, we should do voter registration." "Yeah, I know how to do that, all right, we should do it then." Just then, my niece texts me, "Hey, Andy, there's this guy who's looking for help to register voters, can I get your number?" "Oh, yeah, sure, go ahead." It was Andrew. So we met Andrew at Hardee's, and that's how we, "Hey, well, let's, let's go to the tribes." All right, I was like, "Do you know how big our tribe is? But it's huge, we can't just go there one day." So it turned out, we were here on our, at our reservation, I got mistaken for my master. This is our schedule for the Oglala's, 12 days, 12 days straight. And then, and then we went to all the other tribes. So, anyway, um, I just wanna thank you all for your time and for listening to us, and if the president, um, will welcome us and accept our challenge to do this again, um, we just have a plot coming to life too. So that's all I'm gonna share, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks for coming today, Elaine. I wasn't, um, no disrespect, but I've been sick four times this year already, and I coughed scared the heck out of you today, I heard it just all day long, I was like, I gotta stay back, but, um, good to see you. And I had a question. Why Hardee's?
That was the closest place.
Good to see you, Elaine.
Got one more other thing, we gotta move on. Okay, so going down to the next, uh, high item on our agenda is, is, uh, OLC request for appointment.
Question?
Yes, go ahead.
So, Mr. Chair, why, why aren't we approving an appointment?
I don't know. Did you see the letter?
Oh, God.
It's on there. She explains how that process goes.
Oh, I didn't see the letter.
Yeah. There's a resolution to it, too. I guess, what?
Oh, wait, 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 so, so the resolution, the resolution, I've handed out, says that there's a vacancy in the Oglala Lakota Board of Trustees from the Oglala District.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, this letter saying, "Appoint a representative to the Oglala Lakota Board of Trustees and place a request on the agenda for upcoming tribal council meeting." Okay, so I was confused, I thought, I thought this appointment was coming from, is, didn't they have a, don't they have a seat for, didn't they have a seat at one time from the president's office, or?
I think you're taking it from something different.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying, I'm confused.
Yeah. Now, this one's just, we're gonna read the resolution here.
But question.
Okay, yes.
President, you have a representative from your office that sits on the local, the Board of Trustees, right?
Yes.
Who is it?
Um, Amber Sierra.
Okay, so this one sits on it, for his office, just don't wanna get confused, I read the letter.
Yeah, that's what I was confused.
But it sounds like, uh, uh, she put that first paragraph on behalf of the Oglala Lakota College, is what he's saying, but in the middle, she's explaining how that goes under their bylaws.
Yeah.
And then, under the third paragraph, it's the local board of Oglala that recommended Stephanie Starkumda to fill the remainder of Donovan Gilman's term. And as we know, Donovan has three, just has, uh...
Yeah, a few months ago.
Yeah, eight, so, and just filling his term, so.
So for the law district. Secretary.
And also, um, there wasn't a resolution for this, so I took the resolution from 21, 2021, um, back then, there was a, a vacancy in the Wunditit District, and at that time, Rosalyn Janice filled that vacancy. And so I used that as a template, and I developed this resolution just to make sure that we did have a proper resolution appointing the person in there. And so I sent it to May John, she looked over it, too, so I'll read it. Resolution of the Oglashde Tribal Council, the Oglashde Tribal Appointing, Stephanie Stark comes out to fill the vacancy in the Oglala Lakota College Board of Trustees from the Oglala District. We have the sovereignty clause, constitutional clause, whereas the tribal council approved the charter of the Oglala Lakota College, OLC, by ordinance number 71-01 as amended, and whereas the charter provides for a process to fill district vacancies on the Board of Trustees, and whereas there was a vacancy in the Oglala District seat on the OLC Board of Trustees, the Oglala District College Interfathers of Process to recommend Stephanie Starkumda to fill the vacancy, and recommends the tribal council formally seat Miss Stephanie Starkumda. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglashde Tribal Council hereby appoints Stephanie Starkumda to fill the vacancy on the Oglala Lakota College Board of Trustees from the Oglala District. And then, um, I include it for the remainder of the 2026 election cycle, in reference to the last.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman West, second by Councilman Little.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder. Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
No.
Richard Greenwald Senior.
Sure, why not?
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
No.
Ryan.
No.
Sonia Little Hot Weston. Garfield Still.
Yes.
James Cross.
Ooh.
Craig Dillon.
No.
Norman Standing Soldier.
No.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Nine yes, six no, motion carried. Okay, I, I, we'll move on to next agenda item, I believe you have the VP's, uh, Vice President's report.
Motion.
Is it in our pocket, or did you get it on email?
Email. I'm gonna motion approve it, I can.
Okay, so motion by Councilman Still, second by Councilman Jumping, and then, third by Councilman Greenwald.
David Kelly. Slave Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.
No.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hot Weston.
Yep.
Garfield Still.
Yeah.
James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Eleven yes, four no, motion carried.
What about ads reporter? That food was good. Where's ads reporter?
I wanna see that reporter.
All the porn reporters he had.
I think that's why he's getting out of hand, it's all about stats.
All the data.
Yeah, data.
See the data.
I'm gonna motion approve the fit members.
Was that my hot ribs?
Yeah, I got one.
Oh, yours.
Okay, Councilman Still, your motion?
Yep.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Little Hot Weston. Go call.
David Kelly.
No.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hot Weston.
Uh...
Garfield Still.
Yep.
James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Court team, yes, one no, motion. Chief of Police, I don't see here.
Motion to the Reverend.
Hey, what's the status on, um, secretary, what's the status on, uh, the applicants?
I haven't received anything, any, um, inquiries, yeah.
So we didn't get no applicant for the chief of police?
No.
The current ones, and they're using a flag.
So, the last council meeting, you guys said you were gonna advertise, and then you said you were gonna take it back, because the previous, um, applicants that were, um, brought to council back in 2024 were actually advertised with HR. And they were, they did, you know, all the paperwork, and then they presented me with the, with the, um, the applicants, and that's how we brought it to council. And so what I did is I forwarded to the chair, vice chair, the vacancy announcement, because, um, you guys were supposed to discuss whether it was going to be a political or a mayor position in your last law order. Yes. Yeah. I did, and I did give it to your chair, vice chair, and the secretary.
Okay.
Okay, um, moving on to the future items. How many units?
Eight, eight oh. I'll read mine five. AK test first?
Okay, so, yes, AK test.
Resolution of Oglashde Tribal Council, proofing the contract with Lake Creek Development Corporation for construction of individual and community sanitation facilities for scattered sites on the Heimbridge Indian Reservation. Speaking to the fourth ras and the bid letting and evaluation conducted, wait, skip into the third, whereas, whereas under the terms of a memorandum of agreement between the tribe and Indian House Service, bids were sought for construction of individual and community sanitation facilities for scattered sites on the Heimbridge Indian Reservation. And whereas in the bid letting and evaluation conducted under the MOA and involving the tribal water and super company and the Indian House Service, two bids were received with apparent low bids submitted by Lake Creek Development Corporation. And whereas on the 18th of November, 2025, the House Indian Services Committee of the Tribal Council met and voted for the final approval of the contract with Lake Creek Development Corporation on the, onto the full tribal council. Whereas the tribal council has considered the matter and determined that it is in the best interest of the tribe and its members to approve the contract with Lake Creek Development Corporation for construction of individual and community sanitation facilities for scattered sites. Now therefore be resolved that the tribal council of Oglashde tribe has hereby approved the contract with Lake Creek Development Corporation for construction of individual and community sanitation facilities for scattered sites in the amount of $1,209,804 for the base year, $1,200, for the base year, $1,209,804 for option year one, and $1,209,804 for option year two, resulting in a total contract price over three years of $3,629,412. And be a further resolved that the tribal council understands that in the event Lake Creek Development Corporation is not obtained adequate of bonding as required by the project, within ten days of receiving notice of this approval, the project will be offered to the next legislature. And be a further resolved that the Oglashde tribal president has been asking the vice president and several other parties to sign any documents necessary to execute this contract. Motion to approve, second.
Vote for the Councilman Jeff Daniels, second by Councilman Still. Go call.
Senator Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Little. Flame Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
George Schumer Jr.?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Laya Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Garfield Still?
Yep.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Get on, Mr. Fifteen motion carried.
Thank you. Excellent resolution of Obaalso tribal council, Obaalso tribe approving the disannament of Pre-Ironclaw from Obaalso tribe membership. Skipping down to the fourth, whereas the Pre-Ironclaw requests disannament from Obaalso tribe membership pursuant to UST ordinance number 18-03 in Roman Code Article Six, Section 16, Point Six, Point One, Zero, Two, relinquishment. And whereas by motion and vote on November 18, 2025, UST Health and Indian Services Committee recommended that the tribal council approve the request for relinquishment of Obaalso tribal membership by disannament for Pre-Ironclaw. Now therefore be resolved that the Obaalso tribal council does hereby approve the request for relinquishment of Obaalso tribal member membership in Roman All Rights of Travel Member therein for Pre-Ironclaw, except for me. Motion to approve. Thank you.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagles, second by Councilman Still. Go call.
David Kelly?
No.
Flame Little Thunder?
No.
Tyler Londonman?
No.
George Schumer Jr.?
No.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Laya Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Garfield Still?
Yep.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
No.
Norman Standing Soldier?
No.
Troy Little?
Yes.
All the ironclaws we can't.
Nineteen yes, six no motion carried. Okay. Is that in the chair?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, moving on to next agenda item, two thirds EBD committee. Chair?
The Vice Chair really good. Good guppy voice.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Resolution of the Obaalso tribe council of the old Obaalso tribe to rescind the first resolution number 24 dash 84 XD and to apply game compact negotiation, you need to draft and propose to the tribal council amendments and the tribe's forestry game compact to the state of South Dakota. And where the script before was. Whereas the state of South Dakota has through constitutional provisions and legislative acts, hot rod immunity activities to be conducted in South Dakota. And whereas the Congress of the United States has enacted the Indian Gaming Regulatory Act ITRA Public Law 100 dash 197,122,426,25 USA Section 2701 in 1988, which permits Indian tribes to operate class regaining activities on Indian lands pursuant to the tribal state compact entered into for that purpose. And whereas the Obaalso tribe operates class regaining activities on the Pindar reservation in South Dakota. And whereas revenues generated from the tribe's class regaining activities are tribal government revenues that the tribe uses for its tribal programs and never to improve the quality of life for its members. Whereas class regaining compact between the tribe and the state is subject to review at ten year intervals dated from the date of the compact's execution, November 26, 2014, and will renew automatically without any action by the parties with the same terms as no actions taken by the tribe. And whereas Section 10 point two of the game compact allows the parties prior to the expiration of the ten year period to formally give notice to the other party, provisions it believes require review, requires review or amendment and thus to reopen negotiations. However, the parties may mutually agree to reopen negotiations at any time. Whereas on September 15, 2023, the state sent the tribe a notice requesting to change several terms in the compact. And whereas on November 14, 2024, the tribe sent the state a notice requesting to reopen to Section of the compact, Section 10.2 Location and Section 3.2 Sports Mating. And pursuant to compact Section 10.2, the tribe noted stated that the compact should not terminate from any failure to reach agreement with respect to changes and provisions noticed for review and amendment. Whereas on December 38, 2024, the state sent another letter to the tribe proposing to change several additional sections of the compact. And whereas on October 22, 2025, the tribe sent another to the state objecting to several of the state's proposed compact terms on the grounds that proposed terms are inconsistent with the requirements of the Indian Regulatory Act. Recent compact was approved as issued by the Department of Interior and the Department of State to manage through the class regaining trial of state game compact regulations. Whereas tribal council hereby visiting South Dakota, South Dakota, economic business government chairman James Cross, head of general manager, Craig Dillon, per ille de casino general manager, Fagan, and he and the attorney Stephen Dunn to serve as the tribe negotiating team. And whereas the tribe negotiating team shall work with Bob Strauss because of their extensive gaming experience. And whereas the tribe's negotiating team shall keep the tribal council informed of all proposals. Whereas any changes to the class regaining compact must be approved by the tribal council and shall be limited to adding additional locations and expanding sports field. Whereas upon review of the tribal council, the Obaalso tribe has determined that it needs to rescind resolution number 24 dash 84 XD and desire to replace it with this resolution. Now therefore, be resolved that the tribal council of Obaalso tribe does hereby rescind resolution number 24 dash 84 XD and replace it with this resolution. And be it further resolved that the tribal council of Obaalso tribe does hereby then make the negotiations to you with President Frank Starcraft, economic and business government committee chairman James Cross, tribal council member Craig Dillon, per ille de casino general manager Fagan, least of the casino general manager, Fagan, and he and the attorney Stephen Dunn to authorize the negotiating team to work with Bob Strauss to draft and propose amendments to the tribe's class regaining compact with the state of South Dakota for presentation to the tribal council for final approval. Clarification, motion.
Second.
Motion, Councilman Resol, second by Councilman Little Hawk Weston, question, go ahead, on the graph.
Um, I went upstairs, I'm not sure. The treasure asked me, I shouldn't be on this screen. I don't want to be in the discussion. Yeah, do I hear him? Yes, I, I would love to.
Okay, motion makers agreeing? You don't see it?
Yes.
Go call your security.
I'm the one made the motion.
Make sure we're on the same page.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Flame Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
George Schumer Jr.?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
I suppose, yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Laya Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Garfield Still? James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Fourteen yes, one no motion carried. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, five minutes committee, I'll turn it over to Chair. Stacy, can you read that?
Yeah.
Resolution of the Obaalso tribal council of the Obaalso tribe approving the fifth amendment for the Morrison Marley Intercooperate Order Engineer Junior Agreeing That For Level Three Water Systems Upgrade and Sovereignty Clause, Section 16 clause, Section 4 clause. Whereas on May 14, 2019, the Obaalso tribe entered into an agreement with Morrison Marley to provide engineering services for the Level Three Water System Upgrades. And whereas additional engineering efforts and tasks were undertaken at the request of the tribe. And whereas engineering rate adjustments also occurred through the course of the project. And whereas the total additional amount needed for the contract based on changes is $180,000. And whereas on November 20th, 25, 2025, the finance committee reviewed the fifth amendment attached from the contractor who referenced the amendment. Now, therefore be resolved that the Obaalso tribal council does hereby approve amendment number five for the Morrison Marley Order Engineer Agreement for Level Three Water Systems Upgrade with an additional cost of $180,000, changing the project total from wrong with $1,948,655 $1,948,655 to $2,128,655. And be it further resolved that tribal president, Artis Ash, and the vice president is hereby required to sign all documents necessary to execute this action. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately and shall receive and replace all prior inconsistent resolutions of the Obaalso tribe certification.
Motion. Motion by Councilman Junior, second by Councilman Little, Councilman Weston. Go call.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Flame Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yep.
George Schumer Jr.?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Laya Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Garfield Still? James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? Norman Standing Soldier? Troy Little?
Yes.
Thirteen yes, two no motion carried. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, likely. Here goes the Chair. We took care of it this morning, okay.
I run that ship around here.
My job is business. I don't know how he reacts, he's a little. Um, you have that resolution up there, I believe. Ask me more, Mark?
Yeah.
Can you go ahead and read it? We'll get it. Talking a little too soon.
Resolution of the Obaalso tribal council of Obaalso tribe to approve for short term leases for vacant tribal trust lands on the Pindar Indian Reservation for Anthony Whorlin Horse for the development of affordable residential housing units. With that sovereignty clause, Section 16 clause, Section 4 clause, Section 10 clause. Whereas recognizing the shortage of affordable residential housing units on the Pindar Indian Reservation, the tribal council enacted ordinance 25 which authorizes the issuance of leases for vacant tribal trust lands on the Pindar Indian Reservation for the purpose of constructing affordable residential housing units on the, on those lands subject to the following conditions. And whereas ordinance number 25 dash, we'll read it, insert that, provides that all person may obtain more than four leases of tribal trust lands for a maximum of four housing units at one time. And whereas ordinance number 25 provides that all leases issued under the ordinance shall be approved by resolution of the tribal council and shall be subject to approval of the Secretary of the Interior or his or her destiny provided that application for leases shall be made to the Obaalso tribe land office on a form to be prescribed of that by the office and presented to and approved by the Land and Natural Resources Committee of the tribal council before presentation to the full tribal council for final approval. And whereas Anthony Whorlin Horse has applied for four leases for vacant tribal trust lands pursuant to ordinance number 45 and on October 20th, 2025, the Land and Natural Resources Committee approved the leases and forwarded them to the tribal council for final approval by this resolution. Now therefore be resolved that pursuant to ordinance number 25, the Obaalso tribal council hereby approves four short term leases not to exceed forty eight months per lease for Anthony Whorlin Horse for the following vacant lot of trust block of units of trust land on the Pindar Indian Reservation. Lots nine, ten, eleven, twelve, block thirty six, section seven, township thirty nine, thirty five north, range forty four west. And whereas the purpose of these leases is for the construction of affordable residential houses, housing units and all development and construction on these lots shall be in accordance with ordinance number 45, certification.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Standing Soldier? Second by Councilman Schumer. Go call.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Flame Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
No.
George Schumer Jr.?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Laya Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Garfield Still? James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Fourteen yes, one no, one not voting, motion carried. Good? Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, Law and Order Committee, I'll turn it over to the Chair.
Uh, thank you, Chair. So Stacy, can you help me with this one?
I will.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll read it, it's okay, huh?
Okay. Major, which can help read here.
Okay.
Orders of the Obaalso tribal council of Obaalso tribal meeting ordinance number 07-13, the Obaalso tribe child and family court by adding subsection forty, four fourteen point six and four fourteen point seven care condition foster care licensing. Whereas the sovereignty clause, Section 16 clause, and 4 clause. And whereas the Obaalso tribe protective services giving child welfare act is a tribal program that provides services for children who are ill and are neglected and in higher removal from their home. And whereas on May 2nd, 2007, the tribal council adopted and acted ordinance number 07-13, the Obaalso child care, the present amount, the local, our work. number zero seven one three, the OST Child Care, Kwaishia Na Kwaishia 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 Kwaishia, and whereas the OSTCPS Act provides services pursuant to ordinance number zero seven thirteen, which includes the licensing for foster care homes. And whereas OSTCPS Act has a right and need to amend the ordinance to include kinship foster care licensing and has submitted proposed amendments to the code. And whereas the OST Law and Order Committee has reviewed the proposed amendments and recommends approval and adoption by the tribal council, therefore be it ordained that the Obalosu Tribal Council does hereby approve and adopt the proposed amendments to the Obalosu Tribe Child and Family Code, Kwaishia Na Kwaishia 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 by adding subsections four fourteen point six and four fourteen point seven for kinship care licensing as follows. Sections four fourteen point six, kinship applicant eligibility, foster care licenser A, an applicant must meet the requirements of fourth in sections four fourteen and four fifteen of this code before the applicant can be licensed or re-licensed as a kinship foster care parent. Fairly comply with these provisions and any other rules promulgated by the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care may result in denial or revocation of license. Number one, definition of kin, an adult individual or a relative, a Kwaishia, Tio Shpatt or Kwaishia, an Obalosu tribal member are eligible for membership, custodian, or individual not related, viper, adoption, or marriage to a child, but also anyone who has an emotionally significant relationship with the child or their family who, uh, if they can and also provide services and support to a kinship child or teen. Number two, geographic area served for, serve for kinship care licensing. OSTCPS Division of Foster Care might provide kinship licensing in the following geographic area. A, the OSTCPS has authority to license foster homes located within the established service area of the Obalosu Tribe for purpose of disagreement. OSTCPS might license individuals who are members of the Obalosu Tribe or are member eligible for membership in the Obalosu Tribe, members of other federally recognized tribes, or are eligible for membership and not in the kinship foster family within the established service area of the Obalosu Tribe for children who are under the jurisdiction of the Obalosu Tribal Court. B, the definition of service area may also include as a thin proximity which permits OSTCPS perform all access, placement, support, and life care responsibilities for kinship foster home. C, payment for kinship foster parents. A, kinship foster parents residing in South Dakota will be reimbursed at the same rate of non-kinship foster parents using Title, Title I E funding for, as long as the kinship foster parents meet the licensing requirements of OSTCPS Division of Foster Care. B, kinship foster parents residing outside the state of South Dakota will be reimbursed at the same rate as a non-kinship foster parents using D I E funding, as long as a kinship foster parents meet the licensing requirements of the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care. Three, an individual wishing to apply for kinship foster parent license must apply on off forms provided by the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care. The individual must sign the application form and acknowledge the written policies listed on the application. Number four, kinship foster care applicant, applicants have the following rights. A, the right to make application for license. B, the right to evaluate objectively on the basis of this code. C, the right to review the kinship foster care record excluding references. D, the right to receive a license if the applicant's satisfy all requirements. E, the right to just written notice and specification of grounds of revocation of license. F, the right to accept children and or teens for kinship care if licensed. G, the right to refuse to accept children and or teens for kinship care at their own discretion. Five, the application shall include a statement that submission of a signed application by the applicant constitutes consent to investigation of the applicant and his or her household members, criminal history, child abuse, and blood history, registry, sex offender registry, and character. B, applicant age, an applicant must verify that he or she is at least nineteen years of age. The age of the applicant should be considered in relation to the physical condition, flexibility, mortality, maturity, and ability to supervise and physically care for a specific child slash teen in need of kinship care. C, applicant residency, an applicant must verify others that he or she is currently residing. D, applicant motivation and ability for kinship foster care parenting. Number one, the applicant must demonstrate the ability to provide care to a specific kinship children or teen, which includes the basic understanding of the child teen's physical, mental, and emotional development, and the ability to fulfill the child or teen's needs. The applicant must demonstrate the ability to offer continuing care and guidance to the child slash teen throughout the stages of development in a manner consistent with the social, cultural, and spiritual heritage of the child slash teen. That applicant's ability shall be determined by the capacity, capacity for the following. A, an understanding of and encouragement and emotional support to the kinship child. And B, social and recreational activities and opportunities for participation in kinship child and community activities. And C, assistance to the kinship child in coping with daily living experiences. And D, supervision of the client. And E, provided for safety and protection of the kinship child or teen. Number two, the applicant shall also be able to participate in the OSTCPS social worker or responsible party in devising and executing a case service plan for a child. Three, the applicant must be able to continue meeting the needs of their other children or teen already residing in the kinship home if any. E, applicant family composition, applicant's family composition needs and relationships must be found to not adversely affect the child or teen in kinship foster care. At the health of applicant, the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care must determine that the applicant's mental health will not interfere with this or her ability to provide a child slash teen in need of kinship care with appropriate parenting supervision and intention. The OSTCPS Division of Foster Care will consider both prior and current alcoholic debuff or drug use slash abuse and psychiatric histories, including suicide attempts, diagnosis of serious mental illness, success of treatment, and likelihood of relapse. In the case of an applicant who has a medical history of drug or alcohol abuse or addiction, the applicant must show that he or she has been sobered for at least one year before applicant foster care license must, may be granted. G, physical health of applicant. Number one, physical, no physical exam is required for applicants. However, OSTCPS Division of Foster Care, family developer on a case by case basis may request a physical exam if the applicant or any household member has a medical condition that may impact the care of the child or teen in need of kinship care. The physical must be completed by a medical doctor, physician's assistant, or certified nurse or patient. If the applicant, applicant has any communicable diseases, including such as transmitted diseases, any form of hepatitis or AIDS, the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care will provide special counseling regarding their impact on kinship foster care, but will not discriminate against applicants on the basis of these diseases. Number two, if there is no active or inactive case of tuberculosis or a concern that tuberculosis may be present, no TV test may be required. A, if any kinship household member has an active case of tuberculosis, replacement of a child or teen will be made. B, if any kinship household member has an inactive case of tuberculosis, the household member with an inactive case shall submit to a chest x-ray or a stool test to determine if the TV is active. In addition, all household members will be required to be tested using a TV blood test or Mantux or tuberculin skin test prior to initial licensure to ensure that there are no active TV cases in the home. A copy of a tuberculosis, tuberculosis test reports and physical evaluations must be kept by the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care. The OSTCPS Division of Foster Care may request additional medical statements when a situation such as a change in the health of an applicant or another household member indicates that an additional medical statement is desirable to assist in kinship applicant's assessment. Applicant income, H applicant income, the applicant must have sufficient income to meet the basic needs of the existing family independent for the kinship foster care payment if any. Number one, OSTCPS will assist the kinship foster care applicants in identifying and assessing financial support, such as tannic, snap, etc., to support the kinship foster family. Number two, applicant support obligations, the applicant cannot owe more than one thousand in child support payments. The family developer shall consult with the applicant to determine if hardship exists or if payments are actively being made. I, applicant background checks and fingerprint information. One, an applicant's past background and character investigation is consistent with this subsection and any other federal, state, or tribal applicable laws. However, the kinship foster care applicant and any adult household member should comply a complete background check fingerprints will result in denial. Number two, prior to initial licensure, an applicant shall be fingerprinted and shall sign a declaration of the penalty of perjury regarding a prior criminal conviction. The OSTCPS Division of Foster Care shall submit these fingerprints to the Department of Public Safety, the South Dakota Division of Criminal Investigation, and the Federal Bureau of Investigation Identification Division prior to licensure. If it is determined that the foster parent has been convicted of a crime specified under section four one four dash one J two, the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care shall deny a request for a new license or revoke an existing kinship foster care license. Submission of an application for a kinship foster care license shall be deemed consent to background investigation. Three, the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care shall secure fingerprints for criminal records checks, federal, state, and tribal. Four, A, applicants and all kinship foster care household members aged eighteen and over to detect convictions for crimes involving harm to children or vulnerable persons, including crimes of violence, sex crimes, convictions for sexual abuse, and any felony conviction within the past five years, which would disqualify a person from licensure. If the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care does determine that a person in the household has such a conviction or a household member admits to involvement in any of the above, the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care shall deny the application and notify the household of the denial. B, for applicants and all adult household members that have lived outside the state for the past five years, fingerprints for criminal histories will be submitted to each state in which the individual resided in the past five years and will be considered as part of the background check review. Four, the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care shall conduct a records check of persons for a history of child death, neglect, or abuse via the South Dakota Central Registry of Child Abuse and Neglect and the OSTCPS Child Protection Records. A, the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care shall secure a records check via South Dakota Central Registry of Child Abuse and Neglect and the OSTCPS Child Protection Records for applicants and all foster household members aged ten years of age and over to detect persons in the household with a history of perpetration of child neglect or abuse. If the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care does determine that any person over age ten in the household has such a history, with substantiated and or adjudicated histories, and the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care shall deny the application and notify the household of the denial. B, OSTCPS Division of Foster Care shall screen an applicant and all household members who are at least ten years old to determine if the individual has been involved in any substantiated incidents of child abuse or neglect. The individual may not have a substantiated report of child abuse or neglect. However, OSTCPS Division of Foster Care will review and consider past substantiated reports on a case-by-case basis to determine if any risk exists to the child, child or children or teen in kinship care. Substantiated reports of child abuse or neglect include the occurrence of any of the following. I, the OSTCPS Division of Child Protective Services or the South Dakota Department of Social Services has investigated and substantiated a report of abuse or neglect involving the individual. Two, or III, the individual has submitted to abusing or neglecting a child, III, there has been adjudication of abuse or neglect. Four, the individual has been found guilty of child abuse or neglect. Or five, the individual has been found guilty of a sex offense under the OST Law or Code Federal Law and/or South Dakota State Law and Policy. C, if the screening locates a substantiated report on an individual listed in this section and the individual has not already been given due process on the substantiation, the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care shall notify the individual in writing that the individual may request a view of the information found. D, the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care may waive substantiated reports of child abuse or neglect to allow an individual to be licensed if the substantiated report is at least seven years old and a review determines that the individual has taken actions to eliminate the risk of an individual with abuse or neglect a child. Five, the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care shall secure a sex offender registry records check for criminal convictions for sex offenses for applicants and all household members over the age of ten for use in background checks. If the applicant or any household member is registered on the sex offender registry, OSTCPS Division of Foster Care may review and consider past substantiated charges and convictions on a case-by-case basis to determine if any charges or convictions are the result of any unusual circumstances and if the applicant or any household member poses any risk to the child, children, or teen in kinship care. Six, for applicants and all household members that have resided outside the state for the past five years, reports from Central Registry or substantiated reports of neglect and or abuse in Sex Offender Registry Records Check for criminal convictions for sex offenses for applicants and household members will be requested by the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care for each state. J, applicant references, prior to initial licensure, each applicant must provide, OSTCPS Division of Foster Care, with three references, including names, addresses, phone numbers, emails, and other contact information if any. These references must be able to attest to the applicant's qualifications and fitness to become a kinship foster care parent. L, completion of kinship foster care parent pre-screening training. There is no required pre-service training for kinship foster care applicants. OSTCPS will require training based on the individual needs of the specific child. Kim, kinship care home standards. A kinship foster home, foster care home must meet the minimum requirements of this code and the rules propagated by the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care. Failure to comply with these provisions and any other rules propagated by the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care may result in denial of verification of license. A, access to hazardous items. A, firearms, including pellet guns and BB guns, ammunition, archery bows, arrows, matches, and lighters must be inaccessible to a child in kinship foster care unless under adult supervision. Firearms must be kept unloaded in a locked cabinet and separate from their ammunition. A child or teen in kinship foster care may not use firearms for hunting without having completed a gun safety course approved by the OSTCPS in compliance with applicable state law. B, hazardous cleaning solutions, chemicals, poison shall be labeled and kept in a closed cabinet that is not accessible to children in kinship care. Lighters and other fire starters shall be kept under reach of children. C, all prescription and overdosed drugs in a kinship foster home shall be stored in a locked cabinet or storage area accepted in D I E or other medication may be unlocked if a person has a special health condition that requires the approval for medication to be immediately available, but in a safe location. D, the OSTCPS Division of Foster Care, at the discretion of the family developer, may require the removal or correction of other hazardous conditions or circumstances not covered in this section if the family developer considers the conditions or circumstances to have the potential to cause injury or illness to the child or teen in kinship care. Nine, space requirements. A kinship foster care home must have an adequate, safe, and appropriate sleeping space consistent with the need for privacy to comfortably accommodate the child or teen in kinship foster care, as well as the kinship foster care family. Space shall be provided for the child, teen's personal possessions. Ten, sanitation. A, generally, the kinship family foster home shall be kept free of litter and rubbish, be in a reasonable repair, and maintain a level of housekeeping to assure safety, health, and well-being for the child or teen in their care. The OSTCPS family developer will make an assessment and identify any concerns that require direction. B, rodent and insect control. A kinship foster care home must be free of rodent or insect infestation that presents a health hazard or detriment to the wellness of the area. C, garbage and refuse disposal. Garbage and refuse must be kept in durable, easily cleanable containers that need to leave nor absorb odors. Garbage and refuse must be disposed of often enough to prevent the development of odor and the attraction of insects or rodents. D, sewage disposal. Sewage must be disposed of by means of public sewage disposal, a septic system, or an outdoor toilet facility. Means of sewage disposal may not contaminate food, equipment, or utensils or otherwise create an unsanitary condition or nuisance anywhere on the premises. Eleven, water. Water must be derived from a community water system, water delivery, or a well on the property, or from a water property or from a water system that is tested at least annually by the relevant tribal department or agency or laboratory certified by the tribe to conduct such tests. Water must be tested annually for bacteria and nitrate levels and must be safe for consumption. The kinship foster parent must provide results to the family developer and maintain written documentation of the test results. The volume of water must be sufficient to meet the needs of the home. Twelve, emergency safety. The kinship foster family must have access to a working telephone and emergency services in the case of crisis. B, the kinship foster care home must be equipped with, I, a working smoke detector on each level which can adequately be heard above the home's normal noise level. Two, a working carbon monoxide detector. Three, a working and expired fire extinguisher, class A, B, C, located near the cooking area. C, the home must have two remote exits on each level used for caring of children or teens. Each exit shall provide unobstructed travel to the outside. One of these exits must be adorned or stairway which provides an unobstructed means of travel to the outside of the building at ground level. The other exit may be a window that one can be easily and quickly opened from the inside without the use of tools and the two provides a safe and unobstructed opening with a minimum dimension of twenty-two inches, twenty-two in length, and twenty-two in height and a minimum of five square feet in area. D, the kinship foster home must have a home evacuation plan that will be taught to each child or teen in kinship foster care. The kinship foster care parent will conduct a fire drill each time a new child or teen is placed in a home to ensure the child or teen understands the evacuation procedure. Thirteen, sleeping arrangements. Sleeping arrangements for kinship children and teens will be observed, assessed, and approved by the OST CPS family developer. Section four-fourteen, seven, kinship foster care license application process. The kinship foster care license application process will consist of the following. One, engagement outreach of a relative, kin person. Two, orientation. Three, application of background checks or family assessment. Five, specific training to meet the child or teen's needs. Six, licensure. Seven, placement monitoring and in-service training. Eight, renewal. B, kinship foster care home assessment. Before issuing a foster care license, the OST CPS Division of Foster Care shall conduct a foster home assessment, including, one, interviews, each member of the family, including children and other adults living in the home individually and a joint interview with both parents of the two-parent family. Children and teens residing in the home shall be interviewed based on their development level. Number two, interviews with a base candidate providing clear references. And three, assessment of the home environment. An applicant kinship foster family in order to determine that the potential foster home meets the requirements set forth in sections four, verse unit four, verse forty-fifteen. Both interview and assessment shall be documented for future review. Four, a review of all background checks required to ensure that no issues exist to prevent licensure. Number five, confirmation of a valid driver's license, vehicle registration, and proof of liability insurance. C, kinship foster care license. Approval or denial of the application shall be decided within sixty days of the receipt of the kinship foster care application. After an application for a kinship foster care license is approved, a kinship foster care license shall be issued only for the licensee, kinship foster parents, and residents described in the license. Any proposed changes in residence or household composition as well as acceptance of additional children in kinship foster care or general foster care from the OST CPS Division of Foster Care must be reported to the OST CPS Division of Foster Care or state CPS agency prior to such change. Additional assessment will be conducted to determine continued use and placement parameters of kinship foster home. Failure to report such change may result in revocation of kinship foster care license. Kinship foster care license is valid for one year from the date of receipt. D, kinship foster care license renewal. Kinship foster care license must be renewed every year if the kinship child or teen continues to reside in the home. Kinship foster care license renewal will be granted on an annual basis upon continued compliance with all licensing standards and a demonstrated willingness to cooperate with the OST CPS Division of Foster Care for the care of children and teens in kinship care. A license can be extended up to one hundred and twenty days if there are no extenuating circumstances hindering the ability to complete the requirements for re-licensure. Before a license can be extended, an application to renew the license must be returned to OST CPS Division of Foster Care prior to the current kinship foster care license's expiration date. You can do it. Should I keep going? Keep going, okay. E, dual license for OST CPS for a kinship and OST CPS traditional tribal foster care. A kinship foster parent may choose to provide traditional and kinship foster care simultaneously for children and teens in custody of OST CPS meeting a temporary foster home through OST CPS. Dual licensure for OST CPS kinship or traditional foster parent and SDSS traditional or kinship foster care is permitted. G, denial of license. The decision to issue a license will be based upon written evaluation of kinship foster care home and potential kinship foster home and family. An OST CPS Division of Foster Care decision to refuse a kinship foster care license must be based on a written assessment showing that the applicant does not meet OST CPS Division of Foster Care kinship foster care standards. Denial of the kinship shall receive a written notice fully stating the reasons for denial and the process for appeal. Applicants may reapply when the necessary changes have occurred. Age voluntary withdrawal of license. A licensed kinship foster parent by thirty days' written notice may notify the OST CPS Division of Foster Care of attempt to discontinue kinship foster care parenting. Prior to licensure, applicants may withdraw their application at any time by providing oral or written notice to the OST CPS Division of Foster Care. High, revocation of kinship foster care license. Any kinship foster care license may be revoked by the OST CPS Division of Foster Care for violation of any licensing standard. Written notice fully stating the grounds for revocation of kinship foster care license and a corrective action plan in progress shall be given to the kinship foster parents. The kinship foster parents who has been served with such notice will have no more than thirty days to comply with licensing standards. If danger to the life, health, or safety of the child or teen in kinship foster care exists, a kinship foster care license may be revoked immediately without notice. If a kinship foster care license is revoked, the licensee may not reapply for at least one year after the date of revocation. If a license is revoked, any child, any children, teens in kinship foster care shall be replaced with another kinship parent OST CPS foster home or emergency shelter care until the conditions have been remedied or until other appropriate housing have been found for the child or teen. Three, even without officially revoking the kinship foster care license, the OST CPS Division of Foster Care may remove the kinship foster care child or teen from the kinship foster home at any time upon finding that such reversal is in the best interest of the child. J, appeals. Any applicant who has been denied a license or a renewal or has had his license revoked has the right to appeal. The appeal must be made in writing to the director of the OST CPS within three days of receipt of the denial. The director shall give the appealing party an opportunity to recur on appeal in an informal proceeding. The director shall render a decision in writing within three days to the agreed party and apply the written appeal, and the decision will be placed in the kinship foster parents' file. Two, if an agreed party seeks further review, that party can appeal in writing within five days of receipt of the denial to the OST chief of staff. The OST chief of staff shall give the appealing party an opportunity to recur on appeal before a three-person panel consisting of persons with knowledge and experience in childcare and/or child protection and/or child education and/or child help convened by the chief of staff. The chief of staff shall set the time and place and shall notify the agreed party. The panel shall render a decision in writing of complying with the agreed. The chief of staff shall provide a copy of the decision to be agreed and the written appeal and the decision will be placed in the kinship foster parents' file. The decision shall be final. K, onsite kinship foster care review. To determine continuing compliance with this code and OST CPS Division of Foster Care policy and to evaluate the quality of kinship foster care, OST CPS Division of Foster Care shall conduct a minimum of one onsite visit to each kinship foster home for licensing year. Application for a kinship foster license shall be deemed permission for the OST CPS Division of Foster Care or its representative to visit the premises of a kinship foster care home and to make such a determination. And to be a further or an ordinance, this ordinance shall take effect immediately and shall supersede your appeal and replace all prior inconsistent laws and the old laws to try and circumvent them.
Good job, good job. Thank you, thank you for the reading.
Really?
Wow, just being a patient too.
That's the truth.
David Kelly?
Here, first question. Was part of the attorney, what has gone on?
No.
On the very last page, don't you think that receipt of denial? Chief of staff thing should be somebody with some working knowledge of how this whole system works, such as an attorney?
Are you a professional?
Yes, sir. Somebody that's legally trained to deal with these sort of cases. Because the chief of staff, first one we have, don't have to deal with any of this stuff.
I caught that when I was reading it. The other thing that happens there is he gets to select the whole panel that will hear the appeal. I don't know. It seems like possibly, I don't know. I'm not sure. It seems like you should have somebody with some sort of background in foster care. And then maybe also selecting the panel should be outside rather than that same person slumming out.
Move to the table.
With everything else, the reason I bring it up is because I'm going through the exact same scenario with the state of South Dakota and a couple of my grandchildren. And whenever I have to, me and my wife have to go under, it's like they have an attorney all the time that I have to argue with. So, you know, I think somebody with a little bit more, a higher...
Legal background.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Work in child welfare cases.
There's a couple other things I caught. I don't know, do you have kinship or grandparents that have to have a driver's license? It looks like you can't become a... You might have an elder person who's a grandparent that doesn't have a... So there's a few things I caught here.
One of the things is inspection of our homes. How many of our homes have fire extinguishers? That alone is disqualified in this kitchen. This is really a... I don't know where you got this one from, but it's pretty tight.
I'm thinking, Ryan, how would be relevant. However, they're paying for this if they're going to get paid as a kinship foster parent. They're getting the money from four-E. That was right at the beginning. And four-E has very specific requirements in order to provide those funds. So you might have to check that too. But if it wasn't for a driver's license, it was one of the... The fire extinguisher is rare. Yes. That's why the...
It's on a marker. It'd be tough. We approve it and it goes nowhere and we're stuck in the middle again. Well, they could always bring it back from long order too.
Maybe you can make those amendments to it. Otherwise, we're going to need to hope you all over again.
That was torture.
The lane has to kind of...
Yes, go ahead, Phil Smith.
I had a similar situation that happened to us. I'm curious, it's supposed to be key down. This is what Mr. Nornis, any of this, as far as things are sure that all of state investigated after background or whatever from act of my part of the investigation, investigate all of everything. I disagree with that. Thank you.
So you should just label it and do it back?
Make a motion to approve it with the amendment.
Okay, so who made that motion?
The amendment is pending.
Okay, I'll make that motion to be approved, but to bring it back with the amendments. At our next... Or I send it back to long order?
Long order.
Yeah. Back with the amendments.
Okay, so we have a motion by Council of the Black Lives, second by Council of the Black Lives. This door, lightning in our thunder, Jerry. We have a motion to do it. It's our carry on.
Good job, sir.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Blake Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Linderman?
Yes.
George Jimmer Jr.?
Yes.
Paul Littlewhite Man? Richard Greenwall Sr.?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Ryan Jumpinius Sr.?
Yes.
Sonia Littlewesten? Ziegarmil Steel? James Crox?
Greg Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Sanning Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Thirteen, yes, do not vote, will you carry?
Okay, so the second item on the long order, the resolution of the Ogalsu Tribal Council authorizing the Ogalsu Tribe Department of Public Safety to purchase two OST Highway Safety Police Vehicles through John Jones in the amount of one hundred eighty thousand dollars utilizing fiscal year 2026 OST DPS Highway Safety Grants, skipping down to the fourth, whereas the Ogalsu Tribe Department of Public Safety Highway Safety Division, OST DPS Highway Safety is the tribe's law enforcement agency responsible for patrolling and promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogalsu Tribe and its members. And whereas the OST DPS Highway Safety was awarded the BIA Indian Highway Safety Grant for fiscal year 2026 and is allowed to utilize the grant funds for the purchase of two fully outfitted police vehicles to replace old ones in the amount of one hundred eighty thousand dollars. And whereas the OST DPS will be reimbursed for the cost of the vehicles according to the fiscal year 2026 BIA Highway Safety Grant. And the purchase will be made through John Jones out of Indiana due to availability and delivery prior to grant deadlines. And whereas the OST Law and Order Committee has reviewed this matter and recommends approval by the Tribal Council, now therefore being resolved, the Ogalsu Tribal Council does hereby authorize the Ogalsu Tribe Department of Public Safety to purchase two police vehicles for the OST DPS Highway Safety through John Jones in the amount of one hundred eighty thousand dollars utilizing the fiscal year 2026 OST DPS